So, good evening and welcome to the July 26, 2022 City Council's Special Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's special meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to everyone, thank you for joining us. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ross.
I'm here.
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watton.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Lasse.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
And Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like everyone is here tonight. Thank you, City Clerk. As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. We now move to the first item of special business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
So moved?
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Watton, seconded by Councilmember Holloway, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. None. Motion passes unanimously and the special meeting agenda is approved. So moving on, our first item for discussion is Agenda Bill 22-098, Mill Site Plan Commercial Industrial Plan, Quasaj Judicial Land Use Matter. So the applicant, Snoqualmie Ridge Venture, is seeking city approval of a planned commercial industrial plan. This agenda item provides an introductory presentation of the PCI Plan Application, which we have already done, and a company environmental impact statement. It proposes a recommended schedule for the City Council meetings for consideration. Please note that because the City Council consideration of the Mill Site PCI Plan is a closed record proceeding where the council considers the application based on the record that was made before the City's hearing examiner, public comment on Mill Site Quasaj Judicial Land Use Matter will not be accepted. So before our staff begins with the presentation, I will turn the matter over to the city attorney, who will address the legal parameters pertaining to quasaj judicial land use matters, including the appearance of fairness doctrine. City Attorney Sturman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, last evening at the start of the meeting, I asked questions, polling each of the councilmembers regarding the appearance of fairness doctrine. Just to move things along, since that was only 24 hours ago, I'll just ask you individually if there are any changes to your answers from last night. Councilmember Benson.
None.
Councilmember Watton.
No changes.
Councilmember Holloway.
No change.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew.
No.
Councilmember Lasse.
No change.
Councilmember Christensen.
No change.
And Councilmember Johnson.
No change.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Now I will transfer it to Jason Rogers, who will cover deviations.
All right. Sorry, I waited for them to get my presentation up here. While we do that, I'm Jason Rogers, Senior Planner with the city's Community Development Department. Good evening, members of the City Council. Next slide, please. So, there we go. Okay. Brief overview of the agenda for tonight. I'll briefly touch back again on the schedule that we talked about last night, and then we will look at the applicable criteria for the deviations tonight. Next slide, please. So here's the schedule that you saw last night. We've moved the red arrow down to Tuesday, July 26. That's where we're at, and you can see we are starting in on the deviations tonight, and of course, final action by the council is set for late September. Next slide, please. So I mentioned the criteria. Here you can see that the three subparts tonight, you'll be considering the requested deviations, and there are criteria for those are in the city's code 17.20.050 subsection I. Next slide. So to start off on deviations, there are numerous opportunities for the applicant, Snoqualmie Ridge Ventures, to request deviations for this project. The applicant has requested seven. Snoqualmie's code is somewhat unique and encourages opportunities to better serve the city and optimize the efficiency of land, allow for public amenities such as open space and parks, and also encourage bicycle and pedestrian orientation of these planned commercial industrial projects. And so that's where the deviations come into play. Now, this city has a history of deviations. For example, Snoqualmie Ridge 1 and 2, because those are developed under what are called mixed-use final plans, that entire section.
Point of order.
Say your point.
I don't believe Snoqualmie Ridge 1 and 2 is a part of the record of this application, so whether they have deviations or not. The deviation approvals for Ridge 1 and 2 are reflected in the record. We introduced the council's past ordinances, memorializing those into this record specifically to address the complaints about the unusual nature of the deviations and to make the case for the hearing examiner that they are a common accepted past practice of the City Council for master plan development. So, Mr. Rogers' point is reflected in the record.
Thank you. Sorry, Jason. Anyway, when it comes to the mixed-use final plans, such as for Snoqualmie Ridge 1 and 2, there are numerous deviations built into these approvals. You can see an example of this. Exhibit 1K in the record is, just as an example, the Snoqualmie Ridge 1 adopted development standards. In addition, the council, four years ago, specifically approved multiple deviations for the Salish Expansion Development Project. That's also in the record, the council's approval for that, which contains the conditions approving those deviations, which were for building height, street standards, and residential design. So, as I said, there's a history of approving deviations for these kinds of projects. This applicant, as I said, requested seven deviations. These are covering building height, wetland buffers, several for street design standards, one for street lighting, and then several for land uses. Next slide, please. So I'll start in on the first deviation that we'll discuss tonight, which is for building height. The applicant has requested higher building heights in this project than would be normally allowed within the planned commercial industrial zoning district. And they have a number of reasons for doing this. Let's go to the next slide, please. You'll recall, we saw this rendering last night. This is from the draft EIS. This is showing one of the main buildings that would be along the main street in the project. These buildings, there are these three main buildings that are on the south side of the main road, are requested to be up to 70 feet tall at the peak and the eaves down at 55 feet. So you can see in this particular rendering, turn it on first, there we go. So this peak up here would be 70 feet, and then the eve line down here at 55 feet. They're requesting this to accommodate the proposed ground floor retail restaurant uses, of course, that are down there, while allowing for multiple stories of residential above that to accommodate the 160 dwelling units that they are requesting as part of this project. Next slide. And then this is the other rendering from the DEIS that you saw. This is showing an example of one of the buildings that would be on the other side of the main mill street. This is more a retail in front, light industrial in the back, with a pitched roof. The request here is to allow a 55-foot building height, so that would be 55 feet to the very peak up here, and a 35-foot eve. One reason they're doing this is, there's a couple of reasons for this. One is a design reason. The applicant is intending to have the buildings resemble, be similar to the existing mill buildings that remain on the site, which are, in many cases, date back over 80 years. The planer building being one example of a building with a similar building style. And another one is simply to provide enough physical space within these buildings for the light industrial uses. They need some of these higher ceiling heights and space to just physically accommodate all the things they're trying to do. Not showing, we don't have a rendering of it, but the other buildings, which would be, from this rendering, further to the left, you can kind of see it hiding back in the trees here, those would be a little more traditional warehouse design, and those are requested to be up to 55 feet to the top of the parapets. An important distinction here is that the applicant is requesting an absolute maximum of 55 feet, so all the various appertinances, the parapet, the air conditioning units, stair towers, all those things would be no more than 55 feet. So the roof line would, in effect, be some number of feet lower than that, 55. And I know that was a question that one councilmember had already asked of, how high would these things really be, would the parapets go even higher? I'll pause here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew has a question or comment.
Yes, I just want to sort of make sure I understand kind of what's going on. Would you mind going back one slide? So in thinking about those buildings, the zoning that exists allows what height?
40 feet.
And this would be what height again?
They're requesting 70. 7-0.
So about, okay. And the zoning, the current zoning is what zoning?
It's planned commercial industrial.
All right. Is there any zoning category in the city that currently allows more than 40-feet height?
There are no zoning categories. There are places in the city that allow taller heights.
And what's the maximum height that any one of those?
Within the Snoqualmie Ridge Business Park, there's a 65-foot height limit in effect. None of the buildings are built that tall, but that is the height limit within that particular area. And you heard the examples I mentioned before, Salish in particular, which of course is not built. And then there are.
Could you just repeat what the Salish was?
Salish would have been up to 60 feet tall.
Up to 60, and then so then 65 for some of the areas on the ridge, is that correct?
Correct. And then, of course, there are some specific exceptions written into the code, Mount Si High School being the prime example for, that schools are allowed to greatly exceed the height limit for specific reasons.
And do we have any height limit in particular for the schools?
I believe the limit is 65. I can go look at the code, but I won't say 65.
So we think 65, 60, 65 is kind of the maximum you could be anywhere else. Tell me again what this would be?
They're asking for a 70 feet at the peak and then 55 feet at the eve.
All right. And then you took us to the next picture. Wait a minute, so that one was 70, did I get that right?
Yeah, so this one over here, they're asking for 70 at the peak, 55 at the eve. This one, they're requesting 55 at the peak and 35 at the eve.
Got it. So the top of this one would be sort of the bottom of the eve, or the other one is roughly same heights?
Approximately, yes. Yes. Recognizing there's a rendering and not a scale.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. And so 65, and the zoning is, do we know anything about why? It seems, given what you just said, that, sorry, the zoning allows 40?
40, yes.
Do we have any knowledge as to what the thinking was behind why that's at 40, or do we have any kind of sense of? It seems, given what you said, that it actually seems to me a little bit surprising that it's at 40. Do we know anything about why it is there?
Unfortunately, no. We could speculate, of course, but it said at 40, it's the highest outright height limit in the city.
Got it, okay.
Some additional color to add, Mayor Pro Tem, is that the way the city's code specifies building height is that for a picture, if you're going to measure to the midpoint. So for example, this particular building here, assume it has a peak of 55, eve, 35. Per the code definition, this would be measured as a 45-foot tall building.
Just repeat the things you just said again.
So the way the zoning code definition of building height is written, you take the average of the peak and the eve, so 55 plus 35, divide that in half, you get, of course, 45 feet.
So as compared to the zoning, that's 40 versus 45 would be how you'd measure that, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
And then back to the other one to be, what was it again, 70 and 55?
70 and 55, so that's what, 62 and a half.
Got it, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasse.
You mentioned the original buildings on the site, the design is intended to reflect that. What were the heights of the original buildings on the site?
The planer building, I believe, is 45 feet. And the other ones are, some of them are close to that, others are a little lower than that.
Can you repeat that again?
The planer building is 45 feet tall, the very large, long building in the northeastern portion of the mill site. And then some of the other buildings around that are mostly at lower heights than that.
So Councilmember Benson had a.
And I had the same question. The planer building, was it a peaked roof as well?
Yes, it is.
And the 45-foot measurement that you're giving, is that per the building codes? Was that the average between the eve and the peak, or was that 45 feet at the peak?
I believe it's to the midpoint of the roof.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew.
Yes, so in terms of what we will be approving, is it like specific buildings, like this building with these dimensions, this height, or is it sort of a, we're just saying broadly, anything? I just, what exactly are we being, how specific is what we are being asked to act on?
I would suggest that, you know, the applicant has made a specific request for, as I've said before, three of the buildings, these main, the ones you see on the screen right now, the 70-foot peak, 55-foot eve, which of course averages to 62 and a half. So that's for three buildings. The other six buildings that are currently identified in Planning Area 1, so there's a total of nine buildings, three of those, excuse my hand gestures here, so you have the main street going through, on the south side of the main street are those three mixed-use buildings, the ones with residential. Those are the 70-foot and 55-foot. Immediately on the north side of the street are these, go to the next slide, there it is. Yeah, those buildings, that's the 55, 35 with the peak. Then there's three more buildings, which are more traditional warehouse buildings behind these, so they would be to the left of this view. Those are, at the moment, they're likely to be flat with that 55-feet outright height.
All right, and so the way that what we're being asked to approve, does it sort of say this is the footprint, or just says three buildings of any particular size, or three buildings? Like how specific is, like how different might the, based on what we're being asked to approve, how different might the actual be than what we're sort of seeing here as an example?
Because we have a somewhat higher level of detail for Planning Area 1 with those, at least conceptual, building footprints, I would say what the council is approving specific to these is, you know, the footprints are pretty close, and the heights are going to apply to these three buildings. Now, of course, the buildings are going to scoot around a little bit, because that's what happens. To my point, I think the council can be fairly specific here and say, these three, you get this, three, you get this, these three, you get this.
Got it, thank you.
Because that is the request as well.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Holloway.
So I just view that most of the heights are view shed issues. Do we have an idea of how this will be visible, say, from the traffic circle and from the Salish?
There was visual analysis done as part of the EIS, and they demonstrated that these buildings pretty much are not visible from off-site. With some, you know, there are some exceptions, of course, because you get terrain rising to the east, and so certainly you're going to see down onto the site from there, but you can't see this from Snoqualmie Falls. There's too many trees and other things in the way, for one example. Again, you're not going to see this from the bottom of the parkway, because there's trees in the way. So that's the summary of what the EIS showed.
And those tree buffers will remain in place even through Phase 1 and 3?
Correct.
1, 2, and 3.
City Attorney Sturman.
Sure, just there were questions a few moments ago about which buildings, which height limits would apply under the deviations to which buildings, and just maybe to help orient councilmembers a little more, if you were in your notebook, to turn to the Planning Area 1 site plan, and if you turned to tab 2 and then work backwards, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, six pages back from tab 2, and it's the plan sheet labeled SP-2, and I'll hold it up, you can see it's green, and it shows the footprints of the buildings that Mr. Rogers was describing a moment or two ago. And Jason, if you wanted perhaps to orient the councils visually this way as well, it might be helpful.
Sure. Mark, do you stop your screen share for one sec? I'm going to show. Apologies, my computer is being slow to share Acrobat. There we go. So this is the, let me hide that part. This is the drawing that the city attorney was referring to, SP-2. And I don't know what I just did there, sorry. And so you can see, so these three buildings along the bottom here, these are the mixed-use buildings I was referring to, and so these are the three that would be up to 70 feet tall at the peak. These next three on the north side of the main mill street would be the ones with the peaked roof, up to 55 feet. And then these three darker blue buildings in the back, these are the more, these are the flat roof warehouse light industrial buildings.
Councilmember Christensen.
So as a follow-up to Councilmember Holloway's question, as it sounds like we won't be able to see the development from the bottom of the parkway, but perhaps as we're going downhill, I guess, what would our angle be then as we're looking out onto this? Are we going to be looking, kind of seeing, like dead-on the 370-foot buildings if that's what we approve, or will we be seeing like a swipe of each? I guess, how does a parkway orient to this?
Yeah. So the parkway comes down roughly over here, it's oriented very slightly north of east-west. And so, you know, this is all trees here, and then this parcel here on the west side of the Snoqualmie River is completely trees. So that's why you're not going to see, certainly, there may be certain angles coming down the parkway, where some of these may be visible. I don't recall exactly what the EIS stated on that point without looking it up.
And just to add to Mr. Rogers' orientation, the parcel on the west side of the river, between the foot of the parkway and the river, you may sometimes hear referred to as parcel D of, it's subject to the conservation easement, when the city acquired that parcel, and it can't be developed.
Sorry, can be or cannot?
Cannot.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew.
And a similar question to the point that City Attorney just made. If we then think about the other side of the river, the same side of the river that this proposal is on, between the road and the river, we just talked about the fact that those trees would still be there, is that land protected in some manner that we would expect those trees couldn't come down, or?
So these areas right along here between the road and the river, they're on the site. These are proposed to be open space, and so there are, and there are in fact some trees here within what is today the right-of-way from Mill Pond Road. Because if you drive on Mill Pond Road today, you know, you don't just get a completely open expansive view of the river. So there are trees there, those will remain. The applicant, of course, will be adding these open space areas here on the west side of the property next to the river. This area down here is part of a large, there's multiple wetlands in here, and this is part of where the applicant is proposing their stormwater outfall system to be further down. This parcel, it's hard to see on the screen, I'll admit, but this parcel here, that you can see the triangle part of, this is owned by Weyerhauser and is not developable due to numerous wetlands.
Why is it not developable?
There are numerous wetlands on this particular site.
Oh, so the nature of what's on that land would make it not?
Right. It's also zoned for open space.
And it's zoned for open space, got it. So the land of this property goes to the river?
It goes up to the Mill Pond Road right-of-way here, and then the Mill Pond Road right-of-way butts the river in this small stretch right here.
Yep.
And then this little, you can see there's a piece of real property that starts roughly here and continues up, this is owned by the city.
Yep.
And it's open space, and then down.
And it is zoned open space.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, super, thank you.
And just for the record, for a transcript person purpose, the parcel, the sliver that Mr. Rogers was referring to is in the northwest corner of this site plan, SP-2, between Mill Pond Road and the river. And then the parcel owned by Weyerhauser that he was describing is located south of the project site between Mill Pond Road and the river.
Councilmember Watton.
So I've got a couple of questions, and it relates to the elevation, and I presume that the elevation is fairly level across the entire site. Am I mistaken?
You're correct, it's generally a level site.
Okay. The second question to that, and that is that the smokestack is a landmark, and the height of that, the one concern I would have is, are these buildings going to detract from that being a landmark site, and are there regulations that the state or county have in regards to that that have already been addressed?
Sorry, I'm scrolling up here, that's why I paused, and I'm trying not to make anybody motion while I do it, so I can show you where the smokestack is. The general answer, at least for these buildings, is that these buildings are quite far from the smokestack. I'll admit, I don't remember exactly how tall the smokestack is without looking it up.
It's about 211 feet, something.
I think so, if memory serves.
Anyway, this is the complete, this is the complete site plan, showing both Planning Areas 2 and 3 in addition to Planning Area 1. The smokestack, of course, is located down here in the southern part of Planning Area 3. So you can see there's a significant physical distance involved here. There's also this large, this area in green you see is going to be preserved as part of, as I mentioned before, there's wetlands in here and buffer areas, and also the stormwater treatment discharge system is going to be in here. So you'll have some vegetation, certainly in this area, and then, you know, we don't have a high level of detail on Planning Area 3. Certainly, you know, effects on historic resources is going to be a consideration when we get to a point where development of Planning Area 3 is laid out in more specific terms. So maybe they need to leave some space between it, maybe they need to keep the building heights down. We don't, it's impossible for us to know at this stage, but it's there, of course, and we just want to ensure it remains protected per the appropriate standards for historic resources.
Councilwoman Christensen.
So as we, kind of putting this aside, if we're talking about Planning Areas 2 and 3, what type of information and options will be coming back to us at a later date? Because I know that it sounds like we're still working on getting the development agreement together. Is any of that going to talk about Planning Area 2 and 3, and what the review process will look like for those?
In short, yes. The development agreement is going to, it will lay out in more clear terms what the process will be, you know, will there be further, or does there need to be further environmental review? What form will that take? What permits are going to be needed? What kind of process will be involved, whether it's with the hearing examiner, the City Council, you know, or what have you? So I think stay tuned for some of those details. I don't know if the city attorney has anything to add on.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you looking for me to?
I'm just asking if you have anything to add about.
Mr. Rogers has described accurately, I think, the anticipated scope of the development agreement, and particularly, it will describe the process and timing for additional environmental review, as well as subsequent development approvals, which may include binding site improvement plan approvals, which were the vehicles used for the build-out of the various portions of the ridge, for example, after, and I think that was also called for by the Salish Development Agreement and the Salish PCI Plan Improvement. Follow that, similar sort of iterative approval process.
Councilmember Benson.
So when I was reading the decision from the hearing examiner, there was some wording that was confusing about the heights of the buildings and the appertinances and parapets, and it seemed like it was leaving a window open to change that for Planning Areas 2 and 3. Was I reading that wrong, or was the language fuzzy? I don't know all of the words that were in the document, but.
Sure. No, so what you're looking at is, the requested deviation on height is, of course, at this point, specific to Planning Area 1, because they've identified some buildings and where they might be, roughly what they might look like. So the council can, of course, make a decision based on that. Now, as to Planning Areas 2 and 3, that level of detail isn't there yet, so the applicant may come back and request, you know, additional height allowances at that future date when we work through, you know, identify what that process might be. At this point, they have not requested any, but they would certainly retain the right to do so at that future date.
And my, I guess my concern is there, from, from what I'm seeing in this diagram, it seems like the, the biggest deviation is in those warehouses where the average height between Peak and Eve, 55 plus 55 divided by two, I think it comes out somewhere in the neighborhood of 55. And those are really big buildings as opposed to comparatively smaller buildings in, in the other parts of, my, my concern would be I'm getting to planning area two and three and saying, well, you know, I mean, you, you went bigger in planning area one and we're only asking for 105 and a half feet, which is half the height of the smokestack. So, you know, I, my, my concern is setting a precedent that, that, you know, maybe a Snoqualmie skyscraper would look nice. And so when we're, when we're establishing these height limits, is there, do we have to rewrite those zoning laws to protect ourselves from something like that? Or I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with, you know, the, the deviations that were made at Salish, the deviations that were made in Ridge one and two are all in this record and they're used as a reason to, to push the envelope further. And at a certain point, envelopes are the right size.
Right. No, it's, and it's a good question, I think. So the historical information on Ridge one, Ridge two and Salish is, is helpful to the council, just to point out that this city council has been receptive to allowing some number of deviations in the past. It doesn't mean you have to do it again necessarily, just that that is the, the history of Snoqualmie with these, these more master plan developments. And, and using the deviation process to allow those more innovative, imaginative, efficient uses of land and, and style of development. When it comes to, you know, future development and planning areas two and three, sure, I, I'll grant, there's a hypothetical world where a future city council, for example, could say, yes, let's allow a 200 talks, 200 foot tall building. They could do that, yes, because the deviation strictly speaking would allow it. That would also require additional environmental review, because the environmental review that has been done to date assumed certain building to what's being requested in these deviations. And so they did a viewshed analysis and some other analysis based on that. If we were to suddenly, you know, triple the height of the buildings, that's going to change the outcome of that analysis. And we don't, and we can't say right now, would that have a significant adverse environmental impact or not? So it's an open question.
So, but just to make the request for buildings higher than what is being asked, it would require a whole new study, a whole new environmental investigation as to, it basically start, start the whole thing over?
Maybe not start the whole thing over, but there would certainly need to be some additional level of analysis done to determine whether, you know, what the impacts of that may or may not be, because the council would need to have that information to make an informed decision as to whether they would want to allow that or not.
And at that point, would, would the public be reengaged in, in the process if further, if further deviations were asked for?
While the specific details will be described in the development agreement, of course, I would say, yes, the public will certainly be engaged on that.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yes, I just want to make sure, sort of wrap up my questions around sort of buffers and open spaces, so I don't cuss through with this anymore. So I understand now to the, is that, is this true north? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
To the west. So when I look at the areas that are green to the south, do, are those, you know, sort of in some way have to end up being open space or green space? Or is that, you know, are they, for example, wetlands? Or you, you kind of walked us through how, how that worked to the west. Is that similar things going on to the south? Or might they ultimately look different than that because it's not otherwise protected?
So this is what's proposed at this stage in the PCI plan. You, you recall the chart yesterday showing the different amount of building square footage and then the percentage of open space acreage. So that's, that's, this is generated from that. You can, and I know they're hard to see on the screen, but this little dark green dot there is a wetland, so is this one, this one. So there's, and you can see these kind of dashed outlines are the prescribed wetland buffers. So there are a significant number of wetlands in that area. And then, as I mentioned before, the, the applicant intends to construct much of their stormwater system within that area. You know, because the more natural, you know, using natural features to help control their stormwater is a better approach in these very, you know, engineered systems. So that's part of the answer.
And so would that be mostly in, so I'm trying to keep my eye on the line of area one and area three there? Is that, that's the line, right? So is most of that stormwater drainage area that you referred to in planning area three? Or is that actually a good part of that up in one?
It's both. This, this part in here is in planning area one, and there will be significant stormwater infrastructure built into here for discharge into the river. Planning area three, when we get to that point, you know, the general intention is the same, but of course, the design details aren't there yet.
Yeah, got it. All right. And then for the area to the north, that big green rectangle, that's part of area one, is that correct?
Correct.
And just to remind me, I know you actually told us this last night, is that zoned open space or, as I recall, there's something that protects that rectangle?
That's zone planned commercial industrial.
Oh, it is.
However, it's a, it's a wetland.
Oh, it is a wetland, so therefore you, you just, you wouldn't be able to actually develop on it because of that?
Yes.
Got it.
You can see it's, it's that darker green that matches the, these other wetlands around there.
Got it. So the only area then, if I'm understanding you correctly, is maybe just that thin area to the east, between the boundary and the buildings and then that area to the south. And so if we wanted to specify some requirement around that being open area, you know, if some measurements are type, is that something we can do or is that something that's beyond our scope?
You could, you could do that. Certainly, you know, the, the plan is shown here, has these green areas around the buildings and, and there's, there's even some more here. This lighter green is, is noted on this diagram as passive open space. So it's not a wetland buffer or anything like that, but the applicant will leave it as green space, you know, let the trees keep growing and things like that. So to the extent that the council would approve this particular site plan with these green areas as shown, you would have that. And the applicant couldn't necessarily start pushing into green areas without some kind of approval somewhere, which would likely mean that, you know, they're, they're going to have to compensate somewhere else. There's also a condition written, you know, a proposed condition from both the staff report and the here examiner's decision about perimeter buffering in there to help me, to help with the visual and aesthetic screening.
Got it, thank you very much.
And also the proposed condition language that approves the PCI plan approves the specific square footages and the plan layouts. And there'd be an opportunity, if council wanted, when you get to that portion of this conversation, to tune that language more specifically, if you feel like it's appropriate to have more specific limitations about open space boundaries and so on. And, and Jason, just to round this out, you were pointing out the wetlands, I don't know if you wanted to highlight the floodway delineation also, because I think that bears some of the questions.
Good point. So the floodway delineation runs roughly southeast through northwest through this, excuse me, it's this one here, through the site. And it, the line is impossible to see, but I fortunately know where it is. But what the applicant is doing is they're not constructing any buildings within that floodway. That's an area that gets more heavily affected by flooding from the Snoqualmie River than the, if you will, the mere 100 year floodplain. So you can see they're putting, they're putting, there's open space areas here, both in planning areas one and three. And then there's part of their, their required parking is within that area. And then, of course, Mill Pond Road and the roundabout accessing the site would also be within that floodway area. As for the rest of the buildings, they would, of course, be elevated out, up above the 100 year flood elevation to help with the flooding there. And there's a whole lot of grading to deal with the, you know, the compensatory storage issues that arise from flooding as well.
Councilor Vinson.
Yeah, just, just for clarity, the, the diagram that we have in our binders and that image differ in the, in that upper section that you were saying was wetland. In, in the diagram, it looks the same color as what's been used as buffer. But you're saying that everything, everything above that, that road there, and I might, is it?
Back one page to sheet SP1. You'll see, this is, this is this sheet, this is SP1.
And this is correct.
Yes, I can, I can tell you from looking at the EIS about this, that is back to big wetland.
It's just all wetland. It's not, so, so disregard this, this.
Yeah, that's just a.
You understand my confusion?
It's a glitch in the drawing, it's.
Okay, all right.
Councilor Asay.
Yes, I want to, I want to still stick on some of the questions on, on height and understanding what the allowable, the allowable are, because it, and it sort of goes to floodway and shoreline. I noticed on the same plane where you were pointing out the, the floodway limit, that the shoreline jurisdiction does intersect with what looks like four buildings. I can't tell at the scale, but it appears to be roughly four buildings. What does the shoreline master program indicate in terms of maximum heights and or other limitations within the, the Snoqualmie Valley watershed? Or is it silent?
Trying to recall what the master program says specifically, and I don't have it off the top of my head. But we could, we can take that one down and get you, and get you an answer that's more specific. I apologize, I just don't know.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the, if we talk about our municipal code, what about the shoreline master program? How does that impact these sorts of requests for deviations?
Yeah, so I, to put my color on, again, difficult to see, but the shoreline jurisdiction line comes roughly through here. So it affects this building certainly, and then this building for sure. This building has a notch taken out of it, so it is not within the shoreline jurisdiction. And then I believe this building here, there might be a very slight corner, but again, this is a little more schematic, they could certainly push the building over a couple feet, most, or not a couple feet, but a little bit to get it out of the shoreline jurisdiction and avoid that particular issue.
Yeah, I guess my, my question is then, just to restate, is what are the impacts of the shoreline jurisdiction to our discussion around deviations? Trying to understand that.
It, it can be related. At the end of the day, this project will also require shoreline permitting, whether it's substantial development or a different kind of shoreline permit, and it would have to conform with the applicable shoreline regulations. So even if there is a higher height limit, so hypothetically, say the shoreline area you could only have 30 feet, even if there's a higher high limit, they would still be limited to that 30 feet unless they go get a, a type of shoreline permit that would allow a higher height. This is, that's a hypothetical, but.
City Attorney.
Sure, just to chime in, so the, most of the shoreline master program is codified in the Snoqualmie Municipal Code. And so just calling council's attention to section 19.08.350, which is part of the shoreline regulations that would apply to the proposed development in the shoreline. And subsection A says that lot size, yard setbacks and height requirements for structures and uses permitted within the shoreline jurisdiction shall be those established for such structure or use by the underlying zoning and SMC Title 17. So which sort of takes you back to the zoning height limits, which also then take you to the process and allowances for deviations. So it, essentially, the master program defers to the, to this process and the, the PCI plan and deviation. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I will mark people there. All right, so let's go to the next slide. And move on to wetlands here. So as, as we've started discussing, there are 29 wetlands on this, on or near the site. Most of these wetlands do not have well functioning buffers today, and in some cases that don't have any buffers at all. This has resulted in the wetlands be, having impaired functionality or, or, or in some cases, be, starting to turn not it into not wetlands. The applicant's request is to effectively allow greater buffer averaging. The code allows up to 25% buffer averaging by right. So that is, you could take a 100 foot buffer, go in 25% or 25 feet in this case, you'd have to then compensate for that impact by adding additional buffer space outside that 100 feet elsewhere. In this particular case, at this, for this project in planning area one, there are two wetland buffers that would be affected. Next slide, please. So this is an excerpt from sheet CA1 in the application packet. What you see here is the areas of buffer impacts are in pink and the buffer additions, and it's hard to see on the screen, but it's easier and hard copy. There's some orange crosshatching down in here. This represents the added buffer errors to compensate for all these additional buffer impacts. It's important to note here that the applicant is proposing, is not proposing any direct wetland impacts. So in all cases, these wetlands would not be impacted, it's just a buffer, a buffer issue. The applicant, the applicant is proposing a total buffer impact of 4.1 acres and would provide 4.28 acres as compensation. So that results in a net gain of buffer over what would otherwise be, be required. As I mentioned before, a major consideration here is that all the wetland buffers on the site are moderately to severely degraded. They're either not, non-existent, they don't have native plants in them, they're not, the purpose of the wetland buffer is to protect the wetland. That's why you have this physical, this physical distance between the wetland itself, the critical area itself, and anything else going on. So adding buffers is going to help protect the critical areas. And these wetland areas provide us, you know, they provide essential habitat for wildlife, they can provide some stormwater filtering functions, you know, and things like that. So that's, you know, some of the, the basic reasons why wetlands are so important for this site. What they're doing is they're requesting the deviation to allow themselves to construct a better site plan. You can see it gives them a little bit better, you know, billable area here, not having to kind of jog things around a bit, and also a better access point in the rear. And they would, as part of this, provide a lot of restoration and enhancement, even creation of new buffers in, in some areas. For example, this, this whole area where they'd be creating wetland buffer type areas is, it's, it's cleared area, it's just got shrubs and trees that have kind of organically grown up over the last 20 years or so since the site was last cleared. It would be part of the stormwater discharge area, and so they would have to go in and really create a, a well functioning wetland buffer area. There is a lot of analysis in the EIS about this, and there are multiple conditions about the wetland and wetland buffers, including a, a specific condition to ensure there's an appropriate monitoring plan for these areas. And the monitoring would take place over, you know, a minimum period of, of five to 10 years and potentially longer. This is certainly not unprecedented. We have areas in Snoqualmie Ridge that have been monitored for close to 20 years now, based on how the development has, has proceeded up there. So these long monitoring periods are certainly not unusual and are in fact, pretty necessary in some of these cases when we're doing these buffer creations and enhancements to ensure that we are protecting the critical areas appropriately.
Jason. Councilor Christensen.
So I, and I like the idea of, of there being a responsibility to do the ongoing monitoring, but is there, is that going to trigger any responsibility on their part to take action?
Yes.
And will that be enforceable?
Yeah.
With that, the city?
Yeah, from, in a nutshell, what happens for wetland or any critical area monitoring for that matter is the city is, we, the city, require the, the developer to get bonds or they can provide cash security such that, because they're going to estimate, well, how much, how much is maintenance going to cost over the lifetime of the monitoring period, whether it's five or 10 or 20 years? They have to put that up as a bond or a cash security or some other security with the city such that if they don't do it, we can turn around, call against the bond and go do it, and hire a contractor to do it ourselves. That hasn't happened. Fortunately, everybody's very good about doing that. But, but that's, that's our, our, the city's security to ensure these things happen. And, and there's a whole, you know, a lot of it, there's some initial maintenance for the places, you know, plants that, you have to have a certain percentage of plants survive after one year, two years, three years. You get to a point where the plants are all well established and you're mostly. You get to a point where the plants are all well-established, and you're mostly ensuring that you're not getting invasive weeds moving in, and you're just making sure things are growing appropriately, and it's a little less intensive once you get things established. But these take a number of years.
Mayor Protem Mayhew.
So I like that answer. I find it comforting and addresses my concern, except that we were told the same thing when we approved another change to our city code recently. And in that case, the applicant in fact never did fund that, and our city never did anything about it because we determined we actually don't have the resources to ever take an enforcement action like that. So where I'm worried is that we're being told it could work like that, but in fact, our experience is they didn't fund it, and we were unable to do anything about that, and we certainly didn't think we had the resources to go in and do anything ourselves. So it's sort of, the whole concept seemed to fall apart in that example. So why should we sort of be comfortable that this would actually work the way that you just laid out, when we've just seen that not work that way on something else?
I'd say for, for, for this kind of thing, a couple of reasons. One, this is a more, if you will, standard process and procedure. We have done this many, multiple times throughout the city for Snoqualmie Ridge development, other developments outside Snoqualmie Ridge. We have, we have this active for projects that have completed very recently around town, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody but Encompass, Church on the Ridge, Panorama Apartments, all of these had, had wetland buffer mitigation plans in place. They all have bonds in place. While we haven't had to call in any bonds, but in my memory here at Snoqualmie, we certainly know how to do it, and we're willing to do it if it comes to that. And all these developers and applicants have been will, you know, have been very willing to continue working with us to ensure they're doing what they need to do with the monitoring, maintenance and monitoring programs. Because at the end of the day, they want that money back. You know, they, they've put up a pretty hefty sum of money in their own name to, to, to secure these things. Beyond that, the Community Development Department staff has expertise in these matters, and we also have an array of consultants that, that we retain that assist us with this. So we absolutely take a trust but verify with these monitoring programs. They're, they will go out, that is, the applicant's developers, people will go out and do what they need to do. We send all these reports to our own consultants and say, hey, does this look right? Did they do it right? And, and this includes reviewing their report, doing their own site visits. So in that regard, if, this is within our wheelhouse. We do this all the time, and we're, we're used to doing it, and we will do it for this project, assuming it's approved, and every other project that continues to come in that would have wetland impacts.
And so we're able to do this in such a manner that we are, we can require receipt of that bond or deposit, or however they meet that requirement, before we allow them to start construction? Is that, we're, we're able to do that?
They, there are certain, whether, there are certain either permits or certificates of occupancy or inspections, they simply, we won't give them until they give us what we need.
And the bond, the security requirements are written in the city's code. And just kind of backing up for a moment, reminding everyone, your consideration is based on the record. And so talking about past applicants who did or did not comply is that council shouldn't consider that. You're looking at the record you have. You could certainly ask about what the processes are that, Mayor Protem's question about, are we able to do that? And, and Mr. Rogers, perhaps we just want to note this on the matrix and point the council to that, those specific code provisions and what they allow the city to require as far as the security and how that process works. Because it is already.
If you could do that, as the city attorney said, just point us to where we can have a comfort that that actually would happen the way you described, as opposed to possibly not happening? Like, how, how would we know that that will actually happen that way?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Just to point out what you mentioned earlier, Mayor, Mayor Protem Mayhew, that I think what you're alluding to is the act, we actually have it funded, just so you know. We should not talk about it. Councilor Vincent.
Yeah, I, I had a question about the wetland buffers, which I don't understand. I'm wondering if wetland buffers, because I'm remembering a lot of wetlands up on the ridge, surrounded by trail systems, very close to the wetlands, can trails be part of these buffers? Would that be something that could be included in a, a buffer area?
Yes, the city's codes allows trails in the outer 25% of a buffer. And we, and there are areas where that has occurred elsewhere in the city.
Because a, a lot of these areas are being put forth as the, as open space to, to fulfill that requirement of the PCI plan. But I, I, I know that it would, it would be a lot, it would, it would seem like more usable open space if there were, if there was some sort of trail system through this that, and, and considering the fact that there's going to be so many residents in this area, to leave them trailless in their own neighborhood, I think would be sad.
Yeah, yeah, we cert, trails are certainly allowed in certain parts of the buffer. Certainly, we have to compensate for, you know, the impact of a, of a soft surface trail in, in a buffer is relatively minor, but it's, it's certainly there, you know, because you have this, whatever width of the trail that is not filled with plants. And so that, that impact needs to be compensated for in some manner. Sometimes just increasing your plant density somewhere else, sometimes is adding a little bit of buffer area. But absolutely, trail, you know, trails could be part of this.
And would that be something that the council could require in, in this process?
Yes, there's a, there is a, a general circulation plan, is one of the, the sheets in the application here. And let me see if I can, I'm going to see if I can find it really fast. Okay, so if you look at sheet SP4, it's actually very close, you'll see that the applicant has identified a number of hard surface and soft surface trails on the site. So the ones in, in that green dash on sheet SP4 are, would be hard surface, some of, and some of those are sidewalks. And then the ones that are in red are going to be trails. So they would not be necessarily be hard sur, they could be hard surface, they wouldn't necessarily be hard surface. They could be gravelled or, or soft. So what you're not seeing is they're not showing too many trails, at least at this point, moving through a lot of those open space areas for a couple of reasons. One, as I mentioned, they're going to be using some of these open space areas for stormwater purposes, and so it's difficult to get trails in where you're going to have a lot of water running through there. Second, a lot of the big green areas are part of Planning Area 3, and we don't have that level of detail for Planning Area 3 at this point in time as to what kind of trails that we may or may not want to go through there. So if it's something that council's interested in, certainly there can be a condition likely to the effect of, let's develop a more detailed trail plan going forward. So we don't have to do it now, but it can be worked on going forward in the future so that when they do come in with some of these later permits that they'll need, we can make sure that gets done.
Councilor Hawey.
So I, I applaud the applicant for their, the trails they do have designated. But my, I guess my question for the spreadsheet is, under what code could we require tra, trail system and trail connectivity? I'm not sure that we can do that. We can cajole and laugh and clap and do things, but I'm not sure that we can actually require a certain percentage of trails or trail connectivity. So take that as one of the spreadsheet items. What code would invoke such a requirement?
There are code requirements for the, for PCI plan, Plan Commercial Industrial Plans, that require the applicant identify a proposed circulation system. You consider trails to be part of the circulation system. So there is code there to say, you know, we could say hypothetically, oh great, you've identified roads. Well, what about non-motorized circulation? That's still circulation, even if it's not motorized.
Councilor Christensen.
To the extent that we did that, would we also be able to require that they continue to maintain the trails? Or do they just have to plan for it?
That comes down to whether they are trails on public property or trails on private property. So that is something that would, I believe more properly end up in the development agreement as to what the maintenance needs and requirements. Public trail, then Parks and Public Works Director would want to be aware of it. If it's a private, you know, there's, will want to get some assurance there potentially.
Councilor Johnson.
Kind of related to a similar question with regard to the, the roads and the melding with parking lots. What proportion of, of that is public, or is that something that again is just development agreement stuff?
This is all proposed to be private. The roads, the parking lot, all of it.
Okay, thanks.
Except for Mill Pond.
Yes, except for Mill Pond Road and the roundabout.
I guess it's a follow-up.
Councilor Say.
So then in terms of maintenance of, of, of Mill Pond and long-term, I might use the word maintenance again. Who's responsible for that with the rerouting and the, and the added curb, sidewalk, gutter, roundabout, all of that? Who's responsible for the maintenance of that in long-term?
If it's a public road, it will be the city's responsibility.
Does that?
Councilor Say.
Does that then apply to the areas on the other side of Mill Pond Road, which are, they're, they're noting enhancing buffers? And I'm going to ask a question about the stormwater outfall, because I really don't understand what that is. Are those also maintained by the city, or are those maintained by the applicant?
So anything that's within what become, what either is or will become, excuse me, city right-of-way would be the city's responsibility, and anything outside of those areas, you know, if it's private property, then it's private responsibility to maintain those areas. So my understanding is those areas of enhancement that are, if you go west or southwest of the, the roundabout and the realigned Mill Pond Road are, remain on private property.
So there'd be an established right-of-way around Mill Pond Road.
I believe that's the intention at this stage.
That was then be excluded from there. Excluded, the city would be responsible for, sorry.
Councilor Say.
So I'll ask again, now, so that's, maybe it's a, it's a topic to be discussed further into the agenda of, of meeting dates. But explain the stormwater outfall and what, what, I guess what that, what that is about and how it relates to the overall stormwater. I'm not sure if that comes later, or that, if that's something we can talk about now.
That there, will we have a lot more discussion later when we get to the PUD criteria, where it talks about providing the property utilities. In short, the, the stormwater out, outfall, apologies, that is a technical term, but that's, that's basically the, the end of the pipe where the water comes out and goes into the receiving water body. So in this case, that body is the Snoqualmie River. So what you would see effectively is some kind of, is a pipe of some kind come out with a, usually there's an, an energy dissipation facility, which is often, you know, a bunch of big rocks to help, you know, slow the water down. I think so it's not eroding things away, and then it goes into the river.
When you say water, what are we talking about?
Stormwater, so rainwater that comes down, things that run off the parking lots, off the roofs, all those things.
And is this untreated water?
It's, it would be treated in accordance with the stormwater regulations. So typically, there's a distinction between what are called pollution generating impervious surfaces, like parking lots and roads, versus non-pollution generating, like roofs, being the main example. The runoff on the pollution generating impervious surface needs to be treated in some respects, because there could be things like oil or tire dust or, or what have you in there. The roof water is generally considered very clean, so it doesn't usually need treatment. This is where some of the wetlands come in, because usually what you see for stormwater treatment, you know, there are certainly some very highly engineered filter cartridge type examples, sand, sand things. You can also build what effectively are wetlands. Those are things like rain gardens are effectively little wetlands, and they're going to filter out those types of contaminants before they're then sent off to be either discharged directly or, you know, into, in this case, the river. There are some projects where you're going to have to have a certain, you know, maybe a big pond or a big, you know, underground vault to hold the water and, and meter it out slowly. Because this project is close enough to the river, it, it's going to be able to just let the water go straight out after treatment. So.
And that, just the last question, sorry. And that has, I just want to make sure I, I get the concept behind it, because I'm, as it relates to wetlands. That water, whether in surface water that needs to be treated or what's called drain water that doesn't need to be treated, does that, any of that go into the wetlands as well?
Yes, one of, one of the main, or one, not one of the main, but a, a primary requirement in the stormwater system is that you, you need to maintain the amount of water inflowing to these wetlands, because by definition, they have water in them. So if you build a whole bunch of things and then redirect all the water somewhere else, that well is going to dry up. It's not going to be a wetland anymore, and you've just violated city code, state law, federal law, you know, all of the things. Bad idea. So we need to ma, maintain hopefully approximately the same amount of water going into these wetlands in the, as we say, the post-development condition. Once we build all the buildings and parking lots and everything as in the so-called natural state. So yes, water's going to go into those wetlands. It will all be treated before it goes into these already existing wetlands, because we can't pollute them.
So any, any of the areas that drain into the wetlands then is treated prior to per stormwater management requirements?
Correct.
And Jason? Sorry, I was going to jump in if the council wants to look at, and Mr. Rogers, correct. You'll cover this in much more detail later. There is a, the master drainage plan is included in the PCI plan application materials. And in particular, this, the general stormwater plan is labeled as figure 6-1. It's not with the same plan sheets that we've been referring to so far. It's further on in, and it appears prior to page 6-5. This is of the overall PCI plan. Jason, if you want to call, pull that up. And, and also there, as far as the stormwater overall plan, it does include constructed wetlands, which serve a stormwater, water quality treatment purpose as well. Again, more detail for later, but just to help orient you.
Councilor Benson.
But by the water being treated before going into the wetland, are you referring to it passing through a swale of some sort or something, something like that? Or is it actually going to the treatment plant before coming back to the, that can't be?
No, your, your first part is right. It's going through a swale or some kind of, you know, there are what they're called filter cartridges, you know, you know, whether they're, and they've got all the sand in them, some other filter medium. This is not drinking water here.
Right, okay.
And the stormwater, the master drainage plan is exhibit D to the, the PCI plan application.
Councilor Johnson.
I think there's even a nice overlook, so you can watch the drainage occurring.
In the rendering there.
Councilor Watten.
We're, we're trying to figure out which page to look at down here, and is there a prize for finding it? Is this?
If you go page 6-2, or the next page after that, it's figure 6-1.
Here we can find you more Doritos, two hours first.
Does it look like this?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see it, the, the figure 6-1. And the conceptual graphic 6-2 in the back, what, what Councilmember Watten was just holding up.
I'm sorry. Councilor Johnson.
On the figures six dash three and six dash four is I think I just answered my own question. That's before and after development, right?
Correct, correct. Six six dash three is the the pre development site plan showing everything and then six dash four, as you said, is post development.
Councilor Benson?
And some of these, some of these diagrams refer to it as Snoqualmie River and some as Borst Lake and I my my main concern is just that this is not shoreline that we're concerned about deteriorating like at Riverview Riverview Park. It doesn't experience those kinds of speeds in the current that that we'd need to be concerned about that.
Yes, no. So in a couple areas, there is a there is in fact a revetment built along the river. So right where Mill Pond Road is very close to the river, there is in fact a revetment there that protects the road and 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 minimizes the erosion there. Another portion of the river, they're further upstream. They're not subject to those same forces because of the way, you know, the the river is coming broadly this way and pushing this way, then it gets pushed curves and it aims itself right at that revetment on Mill Pond Road. So this area off to here doesn't suffer from that.
But we don't have to, we don't have to worry about road being so close to the that's that's been addressed.
Well, and the good news is in this case, the the proposal would in fact move Mill Pond back away from the bank. So it improved the situation a bit by giving some some physical distance where not much exists today.
Okay. That is good.
And you and you can kind of see that up on the screen here because because the existing Mill Pond Road runs through this area right here. It's right up against the river. So so just northeast of there, you know, the road would move inland a number of feet to this roundabout main entrance. And so this entire either 50 or 60 foot right of way with for what is today Mill Pond Road would then become. It would no longer be Mill Pond Road. We gain that space, the physical space between the edge of the river and and the revetment that's there and the
I was misunderstanding the diagram. Some of the diagrams showed the old Mill Pond Road as well as that. So I thought this was a cutaway, but you're saying that the old Mill Pond Road there will be gone. That's not going to be. That's not going to remain.
Correct. It'll be it'll be real line. Mill Pond Road will be real aligned toward that roundabout.
Got it. Okay.
I'll learn how to read these.
And
Councilor Benson?
Yeah. There's no, there's nowhere on any of these diagrams where we can see the revetment that you were talking about. That's not on any of the, that wouldn't be visible.
I don't think it's on any of the diagrams, but it's certainly referred to in in documents that, you know, because there's doctors that that discuss the current state of the river and and structures along there.
It's not labeled as such if you but were if you were looking at a digital version of figure six dash one and where you can zoom in just downstream of the of the outfall that Mr. Rogers was previously referring to, you can see a very close, almost vertical contour. That's the approximate location of the it's just to the west of the roundabout. Difficult to see unless your eyes are really very, very good on the paper copy in your notebook. Zooming in on the electric version from the city's website is much easier.
Any further questions on wetlands? So if not, I can push on to the next slide. There we go. Street, this is deviations for street sections. And this is this is a table taken out of the staff report. I don't expect you to read it on the screen there. This is on pay. It's on it's from finding 18 on page 10 of the staff report. It's page 103 of exhibit four. So if you find staff report page 10. It it identifies the four requested street section deviations and next slide, please. So the first requested deviation is to construct the roundabout at all. The city does not have a roundabout standard. Certainly, we have the one roundabout constructed in the city at the Tocco roundabout. That's built to a wash shot standard because it's on a state highway. So the default in the city's standards would be to build a traditional T intersection where the the main Mill Pond Mill Axro would come to a T intersection with Mill Pond Road. Instead, this roundabout has been proposed, and so that requires a deviation. As to what standard we would build it to, obviously, there's a wash shot standard available for differing sizes of roundabouts. You have smaller ones to very large multi lane roundabouts. We'd be selecting the one appropriate for this.
Councilor Johnson.
Just go back one slide. I'm a little bit confused because only see three and there are four up there.
There's one, two, three, four.
Page 10.
I'm only seeing three in the table. Unless I'm looking at the wrong table. Ah, okay.
Fill back on the prior page.
Thank you.
Got it. Okay. Okay, back to the next slide. Anyway, so with the roundabout, you know, roundabouts do have several advantages over traditional intersections. They they keep traffic flowing better, especially when you have lots of turning movements. They help maintain lane widths through the intersection. It also provides a nice gateway entrance to this the main entrance to one with people come in. There's certainly some more service accessories around the north side via the hall road, but this is where we would be expecting the people visiting the various shops, the residents who come in to enter the site. And so using the roundabout enables that creation of the gateway and helps with, you know, as I've talked about before, the innovative imaginative approach to these mass, you know, planned commercial industrial plans.
Your report to me, Hugh.
So just make sure I understand. So that essentially all of that roundabout is in the floodway. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so that means we would expect, does that mean we would expect it to flood every year or so we're on some high frequency?
The flood frequency would be would be similar to what we see on Mill Pond Road today. In fact, it would probably be lessened a bit because we'd move it inland very slightly. Not certainly not every year. We don't see this stretch of Mill Pond Road flood every year. Probably more of a once every decade or so interval approximately. You know, certainly it's in the hundred year floodplain. So there's that 1% chance of that hundred year flood occurring. But others in city would flood with their usual frequency.
Yeah.
And this would be.
So if that areas, if the roundabout is flooded, what what's the access in and out of the site for both residents of those residential sites as well as emergency vehicle access? Is there roadway that gets there that is not in the floodplain?
Yes. So there's a service, a more a back entrance for for trucks or service vehicles that comes here and goes up to the the hall road is just off this diagram up up at the top. There's another entrance right over here to the hall road and the hall road intersects Mill Pond Road here. This doesn't really flood.
That's outside of the floodway that where you're pointing?
It's outside the floodway. There's there's small portions of it in the floodplain, but historically speaking, we don't see much flooding there. And then you're right to the Tocco roundabout.
All right. So we would so even if that roundabout's flooded because it's in the floodway, we would still expect except for if there's a floodplain, you know, level event, but we'd expect still there's no problem for people getting in and out to their homes and no problem with emergency vehicle access.
Correct. In the in a worser case, if that's a word scenario, you can follow the hall road back up to the northeast where it goes back up into the Tocco neighborhood. From there, you can access 396 that comes down toward Reinick Road, which of course floods a lot. You can also go the other way and come down Tocco Road to the Tocco roundabout. So there is some additional access points should we have even worse flooding.
All right. And all those access points you're referring to other than the roundabout have right aways like our fire truck, you know, that they can make the turns, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. So the next requested devi-
Councilor Johnson?
So in a flooding event, I would assume that if the waters were to go into the parking lot and onto the road and all that stuff, that that is a circumstance where there is an exception for the kind of pollution that be picked up. And that's all allowable under state law, et cetera.
When so much say it's allowable, is it? That's what's going to happen. It's widely regarded.
Fair enough.
All right, next slide. Oh, back this. Okay. The the next deviation would be for
If we could go back to the previous, I just want to make sure I understand.
Councilor Say.
Thank you. So the proposed deviation is to I'm trying to make sure I understand the deviation. So the the standard is to have a T intersection. And so the deviation is actually to build a roundabout instead.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I was clear on that. Okay.
Councilor Hallway, what'd you say?
Per selected wash dot standard.
Or not?
We would determine appropriate standard when we get to the appropriate construction permits for the road. Right now, the best standards to look at would likely be the wash shot standards, but we would, you know, we we have a built in engineering process to determine those things.
That was my question was if we'd be following the wash dot standards for roundabouts.
I'd say more at this point, more likely than not, but I won't guarantee anything until they actually until they submit for a permit to build this thing. At which point we would review it again, you know, to make sure it's built appropriately.
Councilor Say.
Is is there other standards? I mean, are we getting, which is hilarious to be saying this, but the M C A B C D E? Does that have a standard for that? I mean, is there is there a variation in standards that are available or is it? How is that determined?
In in general, most of the standards for roundabouts are pretty similar. You know, because there's only so many ways to build a roundabout. Certain cities may have a specific standard because they build more, you know, city of Sonamish has built a lot of roundabouts. Certainly, city of North Bend is building a bunch of roundabouts, so they may have adopted a specific standard. But at this point, the city of Snoqualmie does not have one and we're not looking to adopt one anytime soon. So that's why that's first of all, why the deviation is needed. And second of all, we would let our engineers use their judgment to select the appropriate standard when the time comes to construct this.
Councilor Johnson?
And once a standard is selected, say it's the wash dot standards, can those be modified to to meet the specific needs of the specific neighborhood since those are just as broad thing that's supposed to cover everything in Washington state, they don't necessarily address the specific needs of that particular area. Not there be a huge deviation that I'm imagining, but you know, if there was some little thing, is that all still allowable that our engineers can do that or are we restricted to, no, we have to follow these exact parameters?
No, there's some flexibility inherent to this, as you as you pointed out, that they might find there's a site condition that they need to do something a little different or you know, I mean, this has been designed to a conceptual level to accommodate, you know, trucks, trucks and buses and large vehicles going through it. But a lot of the specific details of that would of course be worked out in the future. And if they need to tweak it, they'll tweak it to make it work. Right, next slide. This deviation, the second one for road standards is for the roadway south of the roundabout. So going going along Mill Pond Road. What they're requesting is, is you can see to only have a plan or strip and sidewalk on one side. And so the riverside would not have that over here. And so they're doing this 14 foot buffer. The reason for that is that there's no there's nothing further down and there's no sidewalk to connect to. There's no future to connect to. And so having a pedestrian facility on that side you anywhere, there's not, there's no purpose to having it.
Councilor Say.
So I see the request. But I'm looking at figure six dash two. Our our with our outfall lookout. So Councilmember Johnson knows where that is. It that clearly shows us both sides for a majority of of the roadway with a showing a future connection to Snoqualmie River Trail as the going to nowhere location. I'm I'm sort of confused it. Why? Why show that in your application, but then request a deviation not to do it?
Because I would say it's a rendering they did a number of years ago and doesn't reflect the current reality of of what's on the ground. The one of the longer term plans that has of course been discussed once the mill site reaches full buildout, if it gets approved, is to essentially close down Mill Pond Road, turn it into a trail itself. That's of course quite speculative at this stage of the game because that would be a city council decision where the you the council would elect to do that. So that's one possibility. Obviously, the the and I'll speak very generally here, the Riverwalk master plan, of course, long term envisions a complete system of trails on both sides of the river. We're still focused on earlier phases of trying to get that done on this side of the river. So future phases that might be on that side are most likely many, many years out. So therefore, as we, you know, when we think about the PCI plan criteria of thing of development that could be reasonably foreseen, you know, within the horizon of this PCI plan proposal, which is a 10 to 15 year buildout. Do we think that that those trail connections are likely within that time period? The answer is no. We, you know, to be honest, we don't view those as being possible within that time period. Therefore, and that and that's the reasoning behind. There's nothing, there is no pedestrian facility to connect to on that side of the roadway over there.
So as a as a follow up.
And just to chime in on Jason's response there, figure six dash two is the outfall concept drawing. It's not the circulation plan, so it's included in the drainage plan.
Then I would point to the LS dash one, which is the landscape plan, landscape plan, planning area one, which also shows sidewalks on both sides. So I just point out to, I'm just pointing out to my council members that they at some point they planned on it and now they've decided not to. So it does seem that it would be possible to have sidewalks on both sides.
Councilor Watten?
So my question is then, if that's the case and and looking at a trail connectivity issue, what surface does that need to be given that is close proximity to the to the river? Could it be just a hard gravel surface or does it have to be sidewalk on private property that's being developed?
In in this case, they are showing here a four inch thick concrete sidewalk. So for this for this specific section, they would build a concrete sidewalk. Now, maybe it ends up being pervious concrete, for one example. In the past, the council has entertained requests to instead build like crushed gravel paths, notably for the Salage Expansion. So there certainly the council has entertained that before. You could do it again, but that's not what's being requested here. So likely
Only on one side of the street, on the developed side of the street, not on the river side of the street.
Correct.
So the developed side, sorry.
Councilor Christensen?
So, sorry. So the developed side of the street will be the one with the green strip, whereas the riverside would be the crushed gravel.
You go to the next slide. So so I did a blow up here of the relevant sheets. You can see the sidewalk coming down on the outside of the roundabout and dead ends here. And there's a crosswalk. So on this side, the riverside, that's where the buffer, that 14 foot buffer is with the little, the the very narrow what's it, one and a half foot wide gravel pad, essentially, it's just a little between the, it's between the back of the curb and and the continuation of the buffer area. So it's not really, that's not a walking path, you know, it's it's far too narrow for that.
Your report to me, Hugh.
Yeah. I'm somehow not quite following this. So I just want to make sure that can you just point to the specific area that this deviation on the road would apply to?
Yes. So you can see this section BB here, this this line with the arrows. So that's the the previous slide I just showed. That's the section and that's where So that's the, the previous slide I just showed, that's the section and that's where, where it's showing the, the slice.
Yes.
So that would apply from the roundabout south down Mill Pond Road.
And so how far would that deviation go for the remainder of their property? Is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay, and then this road is that they're going to construct, because this is farther, is inland the right term, inland from the river? It's farther inland than the river than what exists today, correct?
Yes, correct.
And so what's going, what we're saying here is that the normal standards would require a sidewalk on both sides.
Yes.
And they're saying, hey, do we have a deviation and not build the sidewalk on the riverside?
Correct.
But the width, they're, they're not doing something with the width. The width is sufficient that they're proposing that one could have been built. They're just saying, don't make us do that because it's a road, it's a pathway to nowhere.
Correct.
So it's some future date, if someone wanted to put in a path or something, the width is there. It's just that we wouldn't be requiring this applicant to build that at this time or at any time.
Yeah, yes.
Got it, thank you.
All right, next slide.
One second. So council, it's been here an hour and a half, but I have about an hour and a half to go. Would anyone like a five-minute break?
I'll give it to you.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Provision for maybe the line, should these other things happen? I think are the two main answers.
It may not need to be sidewalk, but something else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Watten?
So Mr. Rogers, let me understand, on the roundabout portion, do both sides have to be sidewalk at this point by city code?
Well, because there is no, the city doesn't strictly speaking allow, have a standard for roundabouts, the answer to that is yes and no.
Okay.
There is no answer because we don't have a standard. Now, if it were built as a regular T intersection, of course, you'd have sidewalks coming on both sides of the road, coming to the intersection with crosswalks and all those things.
Follow-up question, if I may, and that is, do we have a standard of the width of a gravel path that needs to be? Is, is 18 inches typical? Or do we have cases where, you know, we could decide it's, it's going to be 24 inches? Or is this the applicant's offer to do the 18 inches?
So, so for any, any actual pedestrian pathway, there's a minimum of 30 inches for, for an accessible path of travel under the state accessibility laws. And then of course ADA comes on top of that. So for an actual pedestrian pathway, you're talking, that's a bare minimum of up two and a half feet. Now, realistically, I don't think you'd want to build anything less than four feet wide, because then, you know, people trying to pass each other becomes difficult at anything less than four feet. And that's why you see in the, the general standard, the cities, you know, the, the lowest minimum the city uses is five feet. And we prefer six or even seven or eight feet in some cases for sidewalk widths.
Okay, and we're talking about like residential area?
Right. Five, five feet would be the minimum width under the city's adopted street standards for a sidewalk in just a, you know, residential street at this point.
In the case of, of a pathway being on the, the, between the roundabout and the river, do we have any standards that are there existing? Or is this something that we can say, hey, you know, we'd like it to be, you know, this type of material, doesn't necessarily have to be concrete as part of our trail system or future trail system?
I don't have it in the, in, you know, easily available here, but there is another, the applicant include another section with, of the north leg of the roundabout. What they're showing on that is a seven-foot sidewalk width both sides. So it would be two 14-foot travel lanes. And then you'd have the eight-foot planter strip and then you have seven-foot sidewalks. So that's what they're proposing, is a seven-foot wide sidewalk on both sides.
But we're not, we're not requiring additional planting strip on the riverside, or are we?
Once you get past, you go back a slide, please. So, so this sidewalk coming down here would be seven feet wide. And you can see there's also this planter strip between the sidewalk and the, and the curb. So that continues down to here, where this sidewalk just pushes you straight into this crosswalk to cross the street. And so effectively, the sidewalk and the planter strip would end here, where, where you get out of the roundabout, assuming the council, of course, approves this deviation. And you get the same thing on the other side, seven-foot wide sidewalk, eight-foot wide planter strip. And that carries through along into here.
And that planter strip is maintained by the developer, the applicant?
Yeah, the, the internal road over here would be a private road, would be maintained by the, the developer applicant, property owner.
Thank you.
Councilor Benson?
So looking at figure six, two, this would eliminate then that whole out, outfall outlook, or outfall lookout. Seems like a really neat feature to have. You know, let them want to look at an outfall. I, I, it, it feels like, it feels, um, feels like this is useful sidewalk. Or path, or whatever. You know, I, I mean, we gotta, there're going to be people living in this area. They're gonna, they're gonna want to wander some, right? Would, would this fall under the, under the circulation plan that you were talking about?
Potentially, yes. And, you know, if the council did feel strongly about the, this lookout, you'll see from, on figure six, six dash two, you could connect that lookout via its own direct path without necessarily needing the sidewalk to continue further south on the road. Because of course, there's, you know, it's showing, it's shown as a bit of a loop there. But you could just have the path come directly from the crosswalk, straight down to the lookout. And, and so it'd be a out and back kind of thing. So there's ways to get the lookout without more sidewalk. Because, especially because the, the way planning area one is designed, there's no, you know, it, it would be difficult to cross the street there anyway, unless you're at the roundabout.
Councilor Lusay?
Sort of follow-up on that sort of conversation. If, if council were to not accept this deviation, the applicant would need to build the sidewalk and planter strip to the point at which the Mill Pond reconnects to the existing, the rerouted Mill Pond connects to the existing or only to their property line? Obviously, you got to kick the whole road.
Yeah.
You can't leave a spot out of the road, but they would, they'd be required to build it too?
I would consider likely they would build it down to where it reconnects. But that, I think that's a detail to be worked out.
But, but normally, you would say it'd be built to the, at a minimum to the property line.
Right.
Where their property ends.
At a, at a minimum, usually because of course, they're realigning a road. You know, we would ask them, well, from here on north, you're, you're taking this road that exists today and doing this with it. And so you need to build this new part to the city's adopted standard. So likely, like I was saying, likely it'd be all the way down to wherever they reconnect. But at a minimum, it would be to the property line.
Councilor Hallway?
So then referring back to six dash two, I'll use your terminology. It shows the inland sidewalk ending shortly after the last entrance, uh, street entrance on that side of the road.
Yes.
That is incorrect, and that sidewalk actually continues on to property line?
That's right around where the property line is approximately.
Further down.
You know, and, and this, you know, and again, this is, as the city attorney mentioned, this is a concept. And so I wouldn't-
Be, I'm just-
Yeah. But, but yes, they, that sidewalk would continue all the way down, because that's the deviation they've requested. So they'll have to continue that sidewalk, even though this concept doesn't show that.
Thank you, shows another side, larger side. Yeah, it shows in another figures, I just wanted to set precedence of which one's correct, which one's standing.
Councilor Johnson?
All right. Councilmember Mayhew, have us hand up, I thought I saw it for me.
Okay. In the planter boxes, uh, planter boxes, the strip, anyway. In the mock-up that I know we're not supposed to be looking at, it has street trees. Is that still intended to be the case?
Yes.
Did it have street trees along there?
They would need to provide street trees per the applicable standard, which is in the SR2 standards.
Okay. Not sure to what degree I'm allowed to bring it up, but there are long, long stretches of Snoqualmie Parkway that don't have street trees. So I just, and they're, they're good for a lot of reasons. So I would be very happy if they were there.
Yes. Yeah, we, we would require the street trees. Snoqualmie Parkway has, has some other things going on as to why there are not trees all over it, which I don't think that's really in the record, so we'll leave it at that.
Mayor Porter Mayhew?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that I understand this. Could you go back, there was a slide that I was originally asking you, yeah, that one. 14-foot buffer. I'm just trying to orient that to saw, uh, figure six dash two. And I'm trying to figure out where that 14 feet would be. Because it, it seems like there's a huge distance.
I wouldn't try to orient it to six dash two, because that's not their plan sheet.
So six dash two, it actually looks nothing like this, actually. There, the river's right up against that road, there's not this big, I got, I'm confused about what this would look like.
Which one should they look at?
So for, if you're talking about the road and sidewalk locations, then I think the slide Mr. Rogers was previously, at some point showing is the site plan and road sections, which is sheet SP3.
SP3.
And then SP4, which has less detail, is the pedestrian circulation plan. For, those two. I think Councilmember Lusay's pointed out the landscape plan previously. There's a stormwater sheet, which is SD, as in David.
All right, so let me try and re-ask my question. I'm looking at SP3. I get, I'm trying to figure out where this narrow, what I'm seeing on, up on the screen right now, going from right to left, is I see a river. I see 14 feet and then I see a road. So I'm trying to figure out where is it that there's only 14 feet? Is that, so I take it that's south of the roundabout?
Yes, if you go back a couple, at least one slide here. Yeah, perfect. So what you're seeing is the sidewalk ends here and then this, so this thicker line here, that's the curb line. So their 14 feet is outside of that. And it goes to, you know, I mean, if you consider that the lane widths are also 14 feet, it gives you a kind of visual of, well, how much further out would that be? Because you can see the, the divider here in the middle. So it's that length again, and my hand's too wiggly at that distance, but.
All right, so let me make sure I understand this. So there was the area you were just pointing out. I think I've taken that aboard, 14 feet there, got it. Then, as we move south on that road, we have a wider area, because that's where the, where, uh, Councilmember Johnson's waterfall is?
Yes.
Okay, and, but that's wider than 14 feet in there, right?
Yeah, the, the road is going to be back here approximately. It's a much lighter lines, it's harder to see, but you can see between that really thin line and then this, this topographic line there. That's again, another, about another 14 feet.
To the river.
And, well, and then you get to this topographic line here that drops off to, this is the, that stormwater outfall. And then the river path is basically roughly at where the geographic lines end, so right there.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a relatively significant distance, because it's the width of the current Mill Pond Road right of way.
I got that, I got it. So then if we move south from there?
Yes.
Am I correct in believing that the distance between the river and the road increases from 14 feet from that point as you move south? It's greater than 14 feet?
Much greater.
The- Yeah, much greater.
The road continues going approximately that same direction. But as you can see from here, the, the riverside's bending back this direction.
Yeah.
And so it increases rapidly.
So the, the area of this deviation would be from the south side of the roundabout for a distance, say, to the end of the Johnson's waterfall? It's, that's about the distance of the deviation beyond that? Well, there's the deviation to not have the sidewalk, but in terms of, so, so I'm not asking this well. The 14-foot width only sort of goes to about the waterfall. And then farther on from that, it's more than 14 feet?
As far as the buffer is, what, what, I think what the 14-foot shows is the city would have right-of-way to that 60-foot width. And so the city would own that 14 feet. We, the city could do with it as we will, you know, whether it's planter strip, whether it's such future sidewalk or, or just leave it as it is.
Got it, that's what I was trying to get at. So that's the answer I was sort of trying to understand. Thank you.
Jason? Maybe could you put GR1 up there? Because I think that gives, gives the spatial distances and, as well as the, the topographic contours.
GR1?
GR1, yeah.
Can you stop this one here?
If Jason can put it on the screen, it'll be large enough and in color, I think, for council members to see.
Councilor Watten?
The point of clarification, the 14 feet, is that the minimum width at any one point that we're considering?
For that buffer on that side, that's what-
Of the project, of the project that's in consideration?
I'm sorry, I, I'm confused by the question.
Okay. So we, we know that there's certain areas beyond this area that we're considering that may be wider than 14 feet. Is a 14-foot piece, is that just the narrowest? The, the road comes along the river?
Yes.
Thank you. That helps.
So here-
Councilor Johnson?
And does that include the little bump out for the roundabout? Or does that dip under 14 feet? Or do we not know yet?
Well, what, what they would be doing here is, so this, you know, there's an eight-foot planter and a seven-foot wide sidewalk. So effectively, you still have, in this case, it's actually 15 feet right here to the back of the sidewalk from the curb line where the road is. And so that's going to continue all the way up along here. You see, it, it goes all the way up here. Once we get down here, that sidewalk ends and they're providing 14 feet of space between this, the back of the curb and where the edge of the right-of-way would be as, as we continue down along, along here. And so, and that just continues along. And eventually, you know, the river, the river pushes out, you know, it's over here and, and comes away. And so yet, the city will still have that 14 feet within the right-of-way. There will of course be significantly more space between the, the end of that 14 feet and where the river starts. Okay. Back to you, Mike. Let's go, see, two more slides forward? There we go. Okay. Third requested deviation. This is the internal Mill Street, as the, as it's tentatively called, the main street through the, through the site. What they're requesting here is for angled parking instead of parallel. This would allow for a little bit higher parking count and more parking right on that, that main street for patrons of the businesses. They're proposing an eight-to-12-foot sidewalk instead of what would be required- They're proposing an eight to 12 foot sidewalk instead of what would be required is five to six feet. And then instead of the planter strips, what they would be providing are these landscape islands at intervals inner space through that angled parking. And so you can see that with these trees that are kind of shaded off in the background here, you'd have a series of angled parking spots, then a landscape island with tree, more angled parking spots, another landscape island with a tree. You can see also on one side, they're, they're tentatively saying, you know, they're going to have some, some street trees along, at least the one side with other, you know, planter boxes stuck into the sidewalk area that, it's really more of a pedestrian space, public realm area at this point. Because you can see in, in this section at least, they have this eight foot, which is truly the sidewalk, then a little step up to, uh, you know, pedestrian zone where there could be tables and chairs, you know, other things associated with the retail businesses that are fronting that.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, so you said something earlier and I'm sort of trying to connect the dots in my mind. So did I hear you correctly that this street would be a private street? And what does that imply or what does that mean? And how is that different than a public street? And why, why would it be a private street? And kind of what are the implications of that?
Predominantly that the maintenance is the responsibility of the landowner. And it is not a city street, so the city doesn't maintain it, the city doesn't snow plow it or anything like that. We don't restripe it. Under the city's code, public and private streets need to be built to the same standards. And hence the deviation request, because the, the standard street section for this would be the local access section, which has, you know, 11 foot lanes, eight foot pillow parking, five to six foot wide sidewalk, things like that. And so this deviation, of course, would be quite a bit different than that. But it's, it's all in building with their, this, you know, this applicant's concept for the, the mill street. It's their main street going through the planning area, one of the development.
Got it. And so what? I, maybe there's nothing in record to tell the answer. I'm just trying to understand why, why would they say it would be a private street? Why wouldn't they say this will, well, actually, let me back up. I assume that Mill Pond, the, the realigned Mill Pod, Mill Pond Road would continue to be a city street?
Most likely, yes.
And why would they, like, why wouldn't they say this will be a public street? Like, why are they proposing to keep that as a private street?
It, it also gives them a, a little bit greater amount of control over, so you know, for example, it's easier for them as a private street to go in and block parking off to expand, you know, you know, have festivals or something, just as one example.
They would need a city permit to do that, for example?
They would, they may need a special event permit if it's a large enough function, but they could just go close parking off any day that they wanted to without asking the city ahead of time. Provided, of course, they're maintaining an appropriate amount of parking on, you know, throughout the whole site consistent with the approvals. But, um, you know, for us to close parking off takes a little, you know, takes, there's more approvals involved.
Okay, so it allows them to do some things on the lot more easily than if it was a public street? And so presumably that's their, their advantage to them.
Correct.
Got it.
Councilor Holloway.
So I, I guess I come at it a different way. Why would we require them to transfer that over to us? And we incur the maintenance and upkeep of that in amongst all their buildings? So it's probably better that they maintain it and we don't pick that up. Similar to this, the street that goes between Bartels and Maude's Pizza there. That's not public. That is private and it's theirs to maintain. This is a little bigger street, but.
See, I think. Councilor Lasse was next.
Yeah, so that, that's the direction I was going to ask is, is there, are there more than one example of a private street in the city of Snoqualmie? If that is, if that is considered a private street built to, I mean, one, I, I don't know if it is because it does, I don't think it's built to our standards. But is there a private street somewhere else other than just that one location?
That one's built to a driveway standard, not a street standard specifically. There are some, and there are some other private, they're really more alleys or ways or driveways, but the internal to the business park, Snoqualmie Ridge Business Park there, again, built to a more of an alley or driveway standard. As far as full on private streets, um, there are some not in the ridge, Snoqualmie Ridge. So there's a, a group of houses just down here on Olmstead. Though that's a private street, but it is not built to a city standard because at the time it was built, we didn't require it to be built to a city standard. The, certainly there are some private alleyways on Snoqualmie Ridge. And I know it's come up in the context of snow plowing in the past, um, but they're private. And there, and what, and those alleyways are built to the approved alley, um, street section that's in the Snoqualmie Ridge standards. So, but for an actual street, I can't think of one.
So as a follow-up on that then, if it's a private street, is it subject to our laws and ordinance? Like if we have another snow event and they have to plow the street, if we've got 150 plus residences there, um, they're not going to call the Snoqualmie Mill Ventures, they're going to call City Hall. Who's responsible for maintaining that then? Should there be a, if there's a flood? Or if there's a snow event, or if there's a windstorm that knocks the trees down?
It's a private, it's a private road and therefore a private responsibility. So yes, they may call City Hall and our response is going to be, it's a private road. You need to call the property owner to have the, ask them to maintain it. Now, obviously in a true emergency, you know, we're going to go in there and do whatever we need to do to, you know, if there's a fire, say, and there's trees down, we're going to go in there and cut through the trees and get to that building. You know, no questions asked. But beyond that, if, if there's three feet of snow on the road, it's a private road. They need to hire a plowing contractor.
Councilor Holloway, did you have a question?
It used to be, and I think we, Fairway Place used to be private. I believe years ago we transferred it in, but I can't remember what the vote was. And yes, it was those residents' responsibility to do and to do snow removal as required, which was one of their, you know, they're not equipped to do it. So that's why they came to us to transfer it back.
Perhaps another example would be frontier, uh, between the end of the open right of way at the top of the hill. You have the driveway roadway through Panorama. You have a section through, traverses through Snoqualmie Valley Hospital. And then at the roundabout slash circle, I'm not sure the correct term. That's where the public right of way begins.
Councilor Watten.
So watching the parking challenges along railroad avenues, since with the angled parking and some backing in and some pointing the other way. Since this is all private, are we going to have any requirements that it's back in angle parking or forward parking? Or we don't really care because now it's going to be a private street anyway?
It is shown on the plans as back in angle parking.
Oh, yes. Wonderful.
Not in the picture.
This, this picture certainly shows the cars parked a certain way. But if you look at the site, at the, the site plans themselves, they show, and actually go back one slide.
So my point is, do we really care? And is it a consideration or wish them good luck?
We, I would say we certainly care. The back end angle parking is, you know, it was done here in Danhams Snoqualmie at the behest of Wash Dot. It is considered a safety best practice now for that particular parking design. So that's, and so that's why their deviation request shows the back end angle parking. Because that's at this point the accepted, if you will, standard, even recognizing the operational challenges that can result from this design.
Councilor Vincent and then Councilor Johnson.
So would we have any say with regard to speed limits in this, uh, on these streets? Or would that be also privately decided, uh, within the, or, or is there a standard? Or, um, private roads? Or would this go under a parking lot or?
So the standard would be 25 miles per hour is, is what the design speed is. But as a private road, they could, you know, they can make it 20 or 15 or, you know, if they wanted. I don't think they're going to go out and make it a 40 mile per hour road.
And for, for context, um, what's, what, what's the width of the lanes on railroad, for example?
Without looking, I'm going to guess that the width is probably 12 feet, which is pretty standard for state highways.
Okay, all right.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I got a lot of thoughts on this. So for, uh, the width, at first I was thinking, yeah, it really needs to be 11 feet. But then I just looked up the federal standards and, um, yeah, that seems like that's, that's pretty much, um, uh, right on target. Okay, uh, with regard to the giant parking lot there, is that intended mostly for residential parking and not for parking for the businesses? Or is there a mixture?
It, it, it would be a mixture. I mean, certainly there would be some, you know, I think they would want the residents parking back there and not taking up the street parking in front of the retail businesses. Probably the worker, the people who work in those businesses as well. But I think, you know, if you couldn't find a spot, you know, as a patron right on the street, you could drive into the back. So ultimately it will be a mix, um, a mix there. At the end of the day, it's the property owner's responsibility to figure out their signage and restrictions on who's parking where.
Yeah, um, I mean, giant parking lots, I'm just generally skeptical of, but I don't want to fight that battle right now. So I'm, I'm wondering then, is it really necessary to have that extra space? And if they wanted to have a wider street, is there a better use? Like having parallel parking and then designing the street like they do in Denmark, where you have, uh, the parked vehicles protect a bike lane rather than how we usually do it in the US where the bike lane protects the parked cars?
It's certainly an option. I'll admit it's, it's not been discussed specifically with the applicant. And then later as part of the planned unit development criteria, there, there are some questions about parking. And, and while for a project of this scale, you know, the, the amount of parking required can, there, there's some wiggle room, some flexibility in how much parking you need. We also, for these kinds of things, tend to want the applicant to determine, you know, how much parking do they, do they feel they're going to need to make this work? You know, because, because it takes, it takes a valuable space for them. So anything that's a parking lot, they can't build a building on. So certainly they're trying to minimize the amount of parking to the extent they feel they can. But they also want, you know, they don't want people to come in, can't find a park, if they get frustrated and leaves. That's of course part of what drives the, the parking count. And I think they're also, you know, trying to, you know, create this, this feeling on this, on this main road. And, and their feeling is that this, this approach is, is what they, they believe is going to work best for them.
I don't know if you happen to know this, but off the top of your head, do you know what the ratio is of angled parking to parallel parking? Like how many spots different that is? Is it like 50% difference or 10%?
I mean, because you're, you're trading off, you know, dimensions in one, one way for dimensions another way. Off the top of my head, it's looking to be about three to one. Just basically, you know, it, it of course depends on the angle.
Right.
But in this case, roughly three to one.
Councilor Lasse.
Since we're talking about the street design, the, the thing that's got me concerned is the lack of greenery. While, you know, street trees are, are nice, there are very few, when you look at, I mean, especially when you compare it to the parking lot that is behind the buildings, that is a sea of parking, yet has planting strips that looks like every six or seven cars and street trees ever, you know, every, every way along there as well as the ground, ground surface planting. Yet on this Mill Street, we've got back in angle parking. You know, entire building length is only three planting areas with three trees. So it's not, you know, on one side, the other side, it looks like it has more trees. But my greater concern is, you know, really around the environmental impact and heat island effect and the temperature that that area will generate. We've seen some of those issues here locally. If you walk out in the Safeway's parking lot, you can feel the heat. If you, uh, if you walk along Center Boulevard, you can feel the heat. I, I have just, you know, strong feelings towards a comfortable space. And, and, and that doesn't, doesn't feel like a comfortable space. The other side of it is the three, zero to three foot grade separation. I don't, I don't see ramps. I don't see accessible pathways. I don't, I, I fear kids climbing fences and jumping off and people not seeing, seeing things in that area. I have, you know, that doesn't, to me, again, feel like a, if it feels like a, not a comfortable space, it now feels like an unsafe sidewalk space. But I think there's some, um, while I'm not necessarily, I, I see the, the reasoning behind this. I'm, um, to have larger pedestrian zones, larger places for outdoor cafe. You know, if this, if it is a, uh, a wine and, and, or wine brewery or however it gets organized around for tasting areas, for active space, I love that. But I doesn't feel comfortable allowing that sort of a deviation. It does certainly seems like, um, having a sidewalk and a planter strip and trees at a certain spacing on both sides of the street is warranted for a development like this with the number of people we're probably talking about in the, in the, in the conditions. Especially when you, you also compare that to the sea of asphalt that is in the industrial portion that's just to the north.
So can we go back three slides, please? So to speak to the, the grade change issue first. So one thing that's occurring here is the, the road is in fact sloping up from the roundabout here up to here. And so this first, this red line here is that, the section we've been looking at. By the time and preview of coming attractions, by the time we get to this next section DD here, that whole thing is flat across. So they're, they're having to bring the road up a little bit from here because what they've done is they've elevated all these buildings for flood purposes, trying to sidewalk also up to the level so that you have that, that flat across. And, and there's enough grade change that, that, you know, there, it will be sloped a bit, um, hence that approach. As far as the ADA access and accessibility, you know, they'll certainly have to provide that. I don't think at this stage they provide, you know, because it's conceptual, they haven't had to go in and specifically design to meet the various spacing requirements, ramp slopes, things like that. But it would absolutely be part of their design once they get that far. You know, and fall protections required where you have a high enough height, things like that. As for this, the, the tree issue, you know, they're, they're showing right now, as you pointed out, Councilor Lasse, the one mid-block island. But that's something that council can certainly decide, no, we want more trees. You know, we want, instead of one, we want to have two planter islands spaced evenly or, or four even. Certainly it's going to cost you parking. But the council, because in the deviation process, the council gets to balance the trade-offs against the, you know, the, the purpose statement for the, the planned commercial industrial zone. And that's in 17.20.050A. It's got, it's got the, the introductory things, then it's got those five, um, you know, real purpose things. So you're optimizing the efficiency of land and pedestrian and bicycle orientation. So, um, so that's definitely something you can think about to say, yeah, we want more trees. There aren't enough trees here.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
So I just want to understand, because I, so in this drawing, the buildings to the south of Mill Street are the ones that have residential in them. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
But the, not but, and is the side of the street where they would have the, how to describe that? Could you go to the, sorry, the other slide?
Yes.
That you were just on?
Free ahead.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that one.
One, one more back.
No, no, that one.
This is D, we haven't looked at this one yet.
Oh, sorry, one back then. Yeah, sorry. Okay. So there on the left where, where we see that 12 foot pedestrian zone, well, it's 12 plus eight. So I guess it's 20 foot pedestrian zone. Is that on the side of the street that, uh, that the buildings with residential in them? Or is it across the street from that?
That would be across the street.
Got it. So the thing on the right here is, so in this drawing, to the right is south, to the left is north.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. And so the buildings that had the residential in them are the, how to ask this? I had the impression that the buildings to the north did not have retail in them, that the buildings to the south were the ones that had retail in them. Is that correct?
Uh, if you, if you recall, uh, I think it's SP, is it SP2 or SP? I think it's SP2, uh, in your application binders there. That's the one that has those color coatings for different types of uses. And so what you'll see there is the sub, the buildings on the south side have the residential and retail. The buildings on the north side are intent, they've got that, that kind of orangey color. That's retail use. And then behind that would be the, the light industrial manufacturing use, so.
Thank you.
So yeah, retail's fronting both sides.
Got it. Got it.
We go to the next slide here for a sec. So this is the next section. So you can see here, section DD is just past that first kind of intersection, so now everything's flat. So here we have the, you know, a 12 to 20-foot wide sidewalk pedestrian area, same, we've been discussing, you know, the same provision for things like street trees. I didn't want, you know, we've already touched on it, but of course, the boardwalk over here on Railroad Avenue is very similar to what this might look like, you know, with the back in angled parking and the big wide pedestrian area. They're not proposing to do a boardwalk there, but just to get an idea of what it feels like.
Councilor Christensen.
So to the extent that we're talking about wineries and breweries that are in that 20-foot pedestrian zone, are they also going to be required to have fencing to keep folks out of the restaurant portion? Or is it going to be like this where it's kind of open where you have people scooting chairs out as people are walking by or biking by, like, what does that look like?
They would need to conform to the liquor and cannabis board requirements for that, and that's where the fencing is really coming from. They have to be able to close, to an extent, their alcohol serving area. So yes, you know, if they're doing that, they would have to have that some kind of physical separation.
And then I guess those types of things would just have to fit in with whatever their private rules are for the development in terms of looks and safety and things like that, right?
Right.
And if, if they were not serving alcohol, would they still have to have that physical separation to keep folks from the sidewalk from drifting into the restaurant, or what is that?
They wouldn't need to have it if they're not serving alcohol. Now, obviously, the businesses could want that anyway to help kind of contain and close off their space, but it wouldn't be required.
Councilor Say.
So just so I don't, I don't summarize it myself, I actually get a summary from you. The difference between section CC and section DD is the grade change.
Correct.
I want to simplify it on my own, I want to make sure I got it right. I got a yes, I got a yes, though.
All right, next slide, please. Moving right along here. Next requested deviation is about street lighting. The city has been using the Snoqualmie Ridge two standards for everything, including street lighting. The applicant is requesting to develop their own standards for street lighting because they want to be able to develop something that's going to fit with their whole design here and not necessarily be locked into what the SR2 standard shows. There's a lot of discussion in both the application materials and there's a lot of findings about, you know, they're going to respect the, you know, the dark sky initiative that we also use in SR2, so we're not blasting light straight up into the skies. But it's part of the creative nature of this planned commercial industrial zone to say, yes, it's a great idea for you to have, be able to integrate all your design features here to say, yes, you can have some light that's going to be a little bit different, you know, with different light heads or poles that we don't otherwise allow.
Mayor Potemehu.
Yeah, so just to make sure I understand that, this, so the SR2 standards sound very prescriptive, the light looks like this, it's shaped like this, et cetera. As opposed to this is how much light you can emit, or I'm trying to, from your comments, I got the impression they're not necessarily asking for more light in total. They may be asking to put it in different focus, in different places, and using different kind of fixtures and so forth than what evidently we required in SR2. Is that sort of a general understanding of what they're proposing, or are they actually saying, no, we want to create more, you know, 50% more light than you allowed in SR2?
No, it's much more about, excuse me, the design of the physical light standards and not the lighting levels, per se.
Okay, so we were worried about a certain aesthetic in SR2, and they're saying, you know, can we move away from that aesthetic and do something that's more in tune with our development?
Right, yeah, there are three, I believe, light pole fixtures you can, that are in SR2 standards. And they're all very similar, it's mostly a materials difference.
Got it, thanks.
Councilor Benson.
One of the materials differences was, that was mentioned, was wooden poles for some of the lighting. As opposed to metal poles that we see down here. Is there a significant difference in lifespan for those different poles? Intuitively, I'd say a wooden pole isn't going to last as long as a metal one, but that might be wrong, but.
It's probably an accurate assessment, but ultimately, because these are, they're street lines on private roads, you know, it's either going to be owned by the developer applicant, and so they'll need to worry about, or they're going to have to coordinate with Puget Sun Energy about the light fixtures, and that's between them.
Councilor Say.
Councilmember Holloway had his hand up before me.
No, I already.
I got a couple different questions, but I'll answer one first so I can pass it along. On the previous deviations, it's been pretty clear what's being asked for. You know, a street is this wide, we want to do it this way, a parking stall is this way, we want to do it this way. A wetland buffer is this, we want to reduce it to that. In this deviation, we're being asked to trust us, we'll give you some better lighting. I'm asking the question of, how do we do that? Not that we don't trust, I don't think that's the issue, I think it's more of, there's nothing to base it on. And so, from a standpoint of a deviation, I certainly would entertain this further down the road when they've had a chance to develop it. Is that still a possibility? I mean, can we, as a council, you know, deny a deviation yet allow one in the future?
So we've addressed this through a proposed condition, it's condition number eight. What it says is, so backing up, one thing that will be necessary following this, the council's decision on the planned commercial industrial plan is development and future council approval of design guidelines for this, you know, what materials are really going to be used, what paint colors, you know, how the building is really going to look. Because right now, we have these conceptual renderings, but that's not enough to actually build buildings from. So one of the components of these design guidelines or design standards really is going to be, and this is condition number eight speaks to this specifically, is standards for a unified lighting plan for all streets into development, and needs to be reviewed by a qualified engineer, and it needs to be approved by the Parks and Public Works Director. So that's where, we're not just leaving it up to chance and so much of this trust us and saying, no, we understand you don't have all those details right now. But you're going to need to get the city to sign off on it before you're actually going to go build anything.
Can you point me to the condition number eight? I'm losing whether it's in this packet or the other.
Page 47 of the staff report.
Staff report, okay, thank you.
It's also referenced in the hearing examiner, but I have the staff report in front of me.
Okay. So to finish that question then, we could approve the deviation full well in knowing that it's really just a thumbs up to go ahead, develop your own standards, but council still has to approve that, or is it some other approval process?
It's a combination of, you know, when the council comes back to approve the design guidelines, design standards at a later date, some elements of the lighting will likely be included in that, so you'll get another bite at the apple at that point, you know, like, they'll probably have some of the physical things and all ready to go. But a lot of the further detail even beyond that, the specifics are going to need to be part of that unified lighting plan that this condition refers to, that's going to be signed off under the way the Parks and Public Works Director for the city. Obviously, the council can opt to change the condition language and require, you know, the mayor to sign off or the council to sign off, if that's the desire here.
Just saying, so Councilor Christensen, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of echoing Councilmember Say's concerns, I didn't feel comfortable with, at least going back to the staff report, just that they had me required to incorporate the dark sky standards. I feel a little bit better about the language in the condition, but I personally would want that tightened up, especially I want to be careful about the amount of light that's added.
Absolutely.
Especially from very tall buildings that will be visible over the trees.
Councilor Johnson.
I certainly, of course, want qualified engineers looking at lighting and electricity stuff, not just, you know, whoever. But with regard to the design itself, I'm sure that our public works director is well qualified to review designs and make sure that they are aesthetically pleasing. I would wonder if maybe that's something that the planning commission would look at as well as they do with the historic district when they're lighting fixtures that are being proposed, to make sure that they just aren't too wild, just as a second look from some residents, so it's just one idea.
Yeah, and that's certainly an option. I mean, as I mentioned, the council could opt to revise that condition to add a different reviews, additional layers of review and approval. So whether it's the planning commission or some other body, that's absolutely an option.
Mayor Potemehu.
So could you just capture onto your spreadsheet that, so that we consider that that condition has written versus requiring some additional level approval, which potentially might be council approval or some other level? Could you just add that onto that spreadsheet as something for us to address and resolve?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Councilor Holloway.
So I'm, I would be uncomfortable giving a deviation to an undefined something, which is what is presented here. Further, I'm uncomfortable giving a deviation to an undefined something and then delegating that, which was a council responsibility on the deviations. So in your process, you're talking about, I guess my preference, and maybe other council members have different, would be that somehow that comes back to council. That is still our responsibility to do the deviation, okay? And I can't, again, I can't do a deviation to an undefined something. It's not doing my responsibility.
Councilor Benson.
Seems like it'd be similar to the way that we use the Parks and Events Commission to kind of vet park designs and then make a recommendation to the council, which we then either accept or don't. Seems like a good delegation, you know? Just a time saver.
The current planning commission, yes.
Councilor Say.
Yes, I'm trying to make sure I resolve, in my head, too, the same thing that Councilmember Holloway had said, is that I'm very uncomfortable approving something I don't know the details of in a deviation. So maybe, I've heard a couple different ways to resolve that, but what is, what is the, what could, if we decline that deviation, what is the, I guess, I don't want to say legal, because that just brings up a whole bunch of weird stuff, but code prescribed method for the applicant to still have that opportunity to propose lighting standards that are not per the city and per SR2 in the future?
Gets, as, you know, one of the things, one of the things the development agreement is likely going to address is, is a, you know, what processes there for further, whether you want to call them deviations or modifications, you know, whatever terminology you want to use, from the adopted standards. And this is present, of course, in Snoqualmie Ridge, there's a deviation process, a minor modification process, and then, of course, a major modification process. So those types of things would be incorporated in the development agreement. And so where this would fall under there is, would fall, would come under however that language ends up getting written. You know, a minor modification, for example, is approved by the community development director with, you know, concurrence of the chair of the community development committee, whereas a major modification is a council decision. So there are levers the council can move around to determine how that would look going forward. Which, and I know that's not a straight answer, and I apologize for that.
No, I know, yeah, I get that, just as a follow up, if I may, just.
And then Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I mean, I look at this as, as it's a major modification, if you're changing the lighting standard, it would not be a community development director and chair of the community development committee, sorry, Joe. But the, I think it's something that, I would, let me finish with, I ask of staff to add it to the list of things, as you've been asked to do, with a way to resolve it so that the applicant can still proceed down that path. I don't want, I don't want to go down a path of saying, you can't do this, and then it becomes SR2 standards. I want them to have an opportunity to propose the development they want to propose in terms of lighting. That's my state, my take.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I certainly understand why they're proposing do something different, and I do think that it would be our due diligence to have some sort of oversight over it. Just want to mention, I think the planning commission might be a better fit for this kind of thing than Parks and Events, but anyway, that's kind of a detail to be worked out down the road. And I had something else, but I forgot what it was, so, go ahead.
Councilor Holloway.
So Lucy is driving me crazy. So my recommendation is the existing standards remain in effect. However, the applicant can substitute a lighting standard based on coordination with public work, our community development director, review and recommendation by the planning commission, and final approval by council. Don't ask me to repeat.
16 years of council, you figured that one out, that's pretty good.
Is that allowable, Bob?
Yeah, I'm asking him.
Well, I think I missed, let me take that off, sorry. And also, myself on screen here for anybody who's watching. As Mr. Rogers indicated, the council can, as a condition of granting a deviation, specify the procedure or process by which it should be implemented. And Mr. Rogers and Ms. Artegi can, you know, kick the tires on this, and when you bring it back, that's a fairly intensive process for a component of the improvement plan as limited as a lighting plan, as compared to the other things that's going on here, I would offer that. Just trying to think about how you would implement that, but obviously, we put it on the matrix, council will look at it, again, as we bring that back with possible condition language.
Councilor Watten.
So if this is a deviation, and there is no recommended deviation to the existing code, would we then simply ignore this or decline this deviation and let the code stand, and then we can come back later and address it?
That's certainly one potential approach. I think what you've seen suggested by staff through the conditions of approval is that we lay out a process for the council to approve the deviation subject to some future actions, because we don't have a high level of detail at this stage about what this lighting plan would show. So just because, you know, their condition is written as it is, doesn't mean the council couldn't change it and say, no, like, we'll approve the deviation, but before this gets approved, it needs to come back as part of, say, the design guidelines, which council is going to approve. So they would then have, however long that's going to be, they'll have to develop along with these design guidelines, a whole lighting plan, and bring it along for the, so the council's going to say, you have all the cut sheets and designs that are going to go into this, and you can at that point say, yes, that's okay, or no, that's not okay, go change it, or no, we don't want to do this at all, go use the regular standards, so, and that's just one option here.
And to follow up, just my own opinion is, I don't want this to look like every other neighborhood that it's not indistinguishable, and I don't want to discourage them for coming forward with a unique plan for the record.
All right, all right, next slide. So the last set of deviations is about land uses, and so they've, the applicant has requested three deviations for this. One is One is from the requirement for a conditional use permit for residential, for second-story residential uses in the PCI zone. The second is a requirement for a conditional use permit for restaurants, taverns, tasting rooms in the PCI zone. And the third is to more explicitly allow that stormwater outfall in an open space zone. So taking, taking these kind of one at a time, you know, conditional use permits are generally designed to examine potential incompatibilities between certain uses. So, you know, if you've got a restaurant that's going to be very close to your single-family homes, we're going to be concerned about noise and traffic and things like that. That's what a conditional use permit is good at getting at. In a, in this, you know, planned commercial industrial development, where the PCI plan is, is intended to already ensure the compatibility, but also have this mix of uses, of the compatible and complementary uses, and optimize use of land, and promote, you know, this pedestrian bike orientation, what we're really seeing here is the conditional use part is not adding value, because the council is already reviewing those compatibility criteria right now. And so it doesn't make sense then to force the applicant through a hearing examiner process at a later date to examine effectively the same, many of the same issues the council's already considering. As to the stormwater outfall, this would be a private stormwater outfall, so public utilities are allowed by conditional use permit in open space zones. This isn't a public utility, it's, it would technically be a private utility, but again, because the council's already looking at potential compatibility issues, requiring, you know, interpreting it to say, well, it's similar enough to a public utility, we can say it, we consider it as that, and we'll make it, get a conditional use permit. The council's looking at all this right now, we, the council can grant the deviation to say, yes, this is allowed, because we've looked at this entire plan, and this is the way to go with it.
Mayor Potemehu.
So could we, like, have a requirement that says, yes, we'll allow those land use deviations as long as you put a plaque near the stormwater outfall, naming it Johnson Falls?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that one.
That's a yes.
There may be a code naming requirement about people being deceased or something.
There might be a First Amendment issue with forcing them to say a certain thing.
Councilor Holloway.
So your statement was second-floor residential use, isn't, but technically, isn't it second, third, fourth? Is there a fourth floor?
Most likely, yes. So to answer the unsaid question, we have long interpreted the specific provision to mean second story and above, not just strictly speaking floor number two and nothing else.
Okay, but I mean, the residential uses is a deviation, and in order to make that work as envisioned, it, there's also a height, so I'm, I'm two steps in on deviations to make this work. Okay?
So the deviation on the residential use is not for residential per se, but the process, whether there's an additional conditional use permit process used to approve it?
Yes.
Councilor Lettsay.
That's, that's the direction I was going, I, that's what I read. So what is the, what is the conditional use permit process normally would be for an applicant that wanted to do residential on a second story or above that is not normally allowed outright?
They, they would need to submit for the conditional use permit with the appropriate drawings and supporting documentation, there's a specific set of criteria for a conditional use permit, and then there's a public hearing and decision by the hearing examiner, you know, public, with public notice, you know, to five neighbors within 500 feet, published in the paper, and then formal decision by the hearing examiner with further notice to accompany that.
Which would then in turn be appealable to the city council. Correct? So in essence, it would, in many respects, mirror and duplicate the process that you are following here by reviewing the deviation, having council as the ultimate decision-maker using a broad set of criteria.
Mayor Potemehu.
Yes, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, I think you made the point, and city attorney just did, I just want to make sure I've got this clear. The purpose of a conditional use permit process, which is what we have normally, when you, when someone says, hey, I want to put a residential use next to a retail use, the purpose of that is that when you go in and do that, we want to have a process to look at, hey, is that compatible, is that going to create any issues that, that shouldn't, you know, that we want to avoid, and to go through a process of considering that, and then satisfying that concern, and then if that's concern is satisfied, a permit's issued to do so. Is that?
Yes.
And so what's happening here, if I'm understanding, is you're saying, well, we're looking at that right now, we're looking at the fact, the question of, will, will this residential use be right next to that retail use? So if we approve this, we've already gone through that evaluation, so therefore, this deviation would say, let's not go through that again, you already decided that as deciding to approve this, so just go ahead and waive, in essence, waive that, because you've already made that decision in approving the plan. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
Got it, thank you.
Councilor Benson.
And, and just piggybacking on that, haven't we already had a hearing examiner that's looked at this and considered this in the, in the initial decision?
Yes, the hearing examiner held a public hearing, took public comment, and then ran, you know, gave, provided the city council with a recommendation on the.
So that, so that part of what would be required from the conditional use permit process has kind of already been done, this would be something to be handled by the Department of Redundancy Department?
Yes.
Councilor Christensen was next.
Yeah, but just to clarify, though, if, if we were going to be doing that process at a later date, it would typically involve more concrete information about what it is that we're approving, though, correct? Like, like normally, when we would review a conditional use permit, like, there would be more complete drawings and pictures and things like that, which the public could weigh in on, and which, I guess, people could kind of pick apart a little bit more.
Yeah, yes, typically, you, you see a higher level of detail for conditional use permits because of the nature of those permits.
Yeah, whereas this is a huge piece of property with potentially a ton of residential units that are going to be affected, a ton of restaurants like that.
Yeah, that's, it's true. At the end of the day, though, as we've been talking about, the, the general considerations remain broadly speaking the same, regardless of, yeah, we have a, yes, we have a lower level of detail right now, but we still know, hey, we're putting the residential here, it's going to be above these potential retail uses, so.
Yeah, so I, what I'm being asked to do is grant a deviation based upon a rectangular box in a pink coloring, and there may be a fourth floor. Maybe there's a fifth floor, maybe there's not. I don't think that meets, to me, that meets the standard of care as a council to deviate from that process and, and move on. I don't know if this was on the record or not, and, and city attorney's disturbing, please stop me if I say something about panorama apartments, but if we were to have granted a deviation there from the design standards, did that happen, or was that not a part of the record that we can discuss? Also, we're, sorry, we're talking about use here, not design standards, not appearance of the building, I think, Jason, earlier to the design guideline, or will, process for these buildings.
Right, so there, there is a condition, it's condition number five, I believe, which starts, starts on page 46 of the staff report. Now, it specifies there will, you know, the design always need to be submitted to the city for approval prior to any, for any building, it does not specify at this stage what that approval process is, which is something I know the council will want to look further at, you know, if you want to be a council approval or a planning commission approval, or, or what might you, you have.
So let me, let me change it then, so it's more probably related to the Salish Lodge expansion process of accepting the use and, and establishing the change in use for that property, which went, which didn't go through that process, because it never made it there.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's a good, good to think of in those terms.
But it would, though, but just so I'm clear, the, the Salish project, which is referenced here, would have, did not have a deviation eliminating a conditional use permit for residential on that property.
Not for that, but the, the key difference is the Salish Expansion Project included land that was zoned planned residential, and so the residential uses that were proposed were allowed outright, and did not require a deviation from a conditional use permit. But they did have the same design standards that would need council approval following approval of the PCI/PR plan.
Last, last item, then to finish that whole circle, then it would seem, you know, part of our duty to require a separate conditional use permitting process if it's opposing a use that's not allowed outright in a zone, that doesn't, that needs that conditional use permit. Something to, something for us to deliberate.
Councilor Watten.
Mr. Rogers, my question is, what is the scope of what we're considering under residential uses? Can it include the fact that it may be condos, or rentals, or short-term rentals? There's a whole plethora of, of things that are going through my mind, and would we be trading off, and, and it's up to the developer to decide, you know, what the market forces are, whether it's office space, or it can be residential space? So I, I just, I'm trying to grasp what we're considering.
There, the request is to, is to allow these second-story and above residential uses, you know, without the conditional use permit. I don't believe that is specifically, that they've specified whether these are to own, to rent, things like that. My recollection is rental, but I will need to look that up. As to, these could not be converted to some other non-residential land use, because they would be subject to the, assuming the council approves of the PCI approval, that says, you get 160 residential units that take up this many square feet, so you couldn't then say, oh, I want this 134,000 square feet to suddenly be office, that's not allowed, because the council did not allow it. They, now, they could certainly come to the council under a future process and ask for that, but you would be under no obligation to grant that.
So if I may, on a follow-up question to that, is if we're granting residential uses, and we know that it's 160 units, the size of the units matter, because as we've seen in the past, whether it's a, you know, one-unit apartment versus a five-bedroom apartment, it has a different impact on not only parking, but also schools and traffic flows and that sort of thing. And, and just 160 units, the average house around here now is 3,000 square feet, is that going to be the expected size of these units? Or maybe they're more micro and 500 square feet?
The, and if you refer to page 19 of the application, that's, that has that table that's, that details out all the different land uses, there's actually footnotes to this table that we didn't include in the slides. Footnote tree specifically specifies that these units would be rental units at market rate in a mix of one and two-bedroom units, so that the average unit sizes, of course, works out to 835 square feet, if you just do the division of 134,000 square feet divided by 160. Clearly, they're saying they're going to have that, that mix, so you're going to have some slightly, you know, probably 1,000 to 1,100 square foot units, and then, of course, some 500 to 600 square foot units, you know, and they'll figure that out as they go.
That is helpful, thank you.
Also, the council could, if it wished, as a condition of the, if you were to approve this deviation, include some more specifics about the unit mix or size within that 134,000 square feet.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson.
So if, if we did go through this plan, if, if I could just restate what I thought I just heard from the city attorney, if we denied this deviation, it would go through the normal process, and through that normal process, we could put in place a number of stipulations along the way, whereas if we did not grant the stipulation, the deviation, we could not do that. Did I hear that correctly or no?
Correct, yeah, no, I, maybe I misheard you. If you grant the deviation as a condition of granting it, if you wanted to specify greater detail on unit mix and sizing within that total 134,000 square feet, you could do that.
Okay, so we would have to grant this in order to have that power?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I'd be interested in learning more about the breadth of that power, because I, I'm concerned that these would just be all gigantic luxury apartments and things that are not affordable, and I'm wondering, to what degree do we have power to ensure that at least some proportion of them would be somewhat affordable? I mean, market rate in Snoqualmie is pretty high.
Councilor Holloway.
So I think it.
I wasn't sure if that was a question.
Well, let me put the question to you. So in terms of granting either the residential use or the height use, can there be a condition that says a certain percentage of the units must be 10%, 10% below market rate? Or something along, I don't know that those are even reasonable numbers, whatever, I just throw something out, but could, could a condition include that kind of constraint?
That's a, the affordability piece has been part of past master plan approvals. There are legal constraints around that, I, you know, just assume, that are probably made more complex, given the relatively small number of units at issue here. I'd like to bring that back and talk to you in closed session about that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Yes.
I only have one more slide which has questions on it, so doing pretty well here.
Well, you only covered, I mean, don't, sorry.
Right, weren't there other?
Decided on Johnson Falls, then?
Weren't there other couple items on that?
Yeah, you only covered residential on the, on the land use, you didn't touch restaurants, tasting rooms, or stormwater outfall.
Happy to come back to the, I, I mean, I covered, I'll admit, I covered them in my, in my initial, then the, the council, of course, started talking about residential, so we can go back, go back a slide. The restaurants, tasting rooms issue is, in this regard, very similar to the residential, where a conditional use permit is required for restaurants, taverns, tasting rooms in the planned commercial industrial zone. Again, to look at those potential incompatibility issues, the council could elect to essentially waive the CUP requirement, allow them outright, in, you know, which fits with the overall PCI plan concept that is in front of you.
Mayor Potemehu.
So I have a question, mayor, is it permissible and legal for us to go home 10 minutes early?
Seven minutes early.
Yes, it is.
Not according to my teenage daughter, who's coming to pick me up.
Correct, for next time, I didn't mean.
Maybe doing, okay, Councilor Lettsay?
But you cover, so restaurants, tasting room, similar stormwater outfall. I don't see that, I don't know where that falls in. I think it's, it's in here, but I'm not sure. Just touch on a little bit more about what, what is the deviation being asked for.
Sure, so that, where the stormwater outfall is located is in an open space zone, specifically the open space two zone. Within all of the open space zones, public utilities are conditional uses, so they require that conditional use permit. This is a, this has two issues. First of all, it's a private stormwater outfall, so it's not strictly speaking a public utility, it's a private utility. So one, one question is, well, could we construe this to be a public utility, and therefore require a conditional use permit? But beyond that, we get back to, now we're back to the same conditional use permit discussion of, well, if the council is sitting, is already considering all the compatibility and associate issues that would normally be considered by a conditional use permit, the council could elect to say, yes, the stormwater outfall is appropriate, there's no need for a conditional use permit, it fits within the entire concept of this PCI plan. that would normally be considered by a conditional use permit, the council could elect to say, yes, the stormwater outfall is appropriate, there's no need for a conditional use permit, it fits within the entire concept of this PCI plan, and grant the deviation to allow the stormwater outfall outright within the OS2 zone, you know, subject to, of course, the site plan that also goes with this PCI plan. So they couldn't just put it anywhere. Really, a very technical, that is a very, very technical thing. But that's the specific deviation at issue here.
So council, we have about five minutes. Is there one last question, Councilor Say, get a question?
I just want to know if we named it like a Class 4 Rapids, could we just call it the Johnson? Had a lighten the mood, everybody's getting serious again.
So we have completed quite a few items this evening, they're good discussions. So our next meeting is an hour, is a roundtable before council on August 8th. And because we have discussed all the deviations, so the next idea would, next item would be PUD criteria. So if you can read ahead on PUD criteria, and also comprehensive plan, because that, on the 8th, we'll have one hour, most likely we'll have a closed session. And then on that Tuesday, we'll have a three-hour session. So read the PUD criteria and comprehensive plan, please, at least those. Councilor Say.
Just a question, we've created a number of items that are, we would call on the matrix. At what point is there going to be some circulation of those items now? Where we can, I assume, at some point, circle back, look at, look at some of them. I mean, remember the last time we went through this, we merged a few together, we combined things into other ones, it brought other questions. That's where things, so what's your timeline, Jason, in terms of feedback back to us before we do get together again?
We have the initial set of questions that came in, you know, excuse me, yesterday's meeting, and then last night via email. We've obviously been listening to you today. So what we're going to do is get those on the matrix and get at least an initial version out to you by this Friday. It may not have answers to all of the things that have been brought up, because of, of course, there were a number of issues brought up tonight. But we're going to get that out to you Friday to start getting you those answers. And we're going to keep, work to get you an update at least every week, so that you're seeing more information come in for the council to consider. Well, we can also, of course, build time into the schedule for the council to directly address some of these issue matrix topics. You know, we are trying to move through everything, so the council does have this complete picture of the project, recognizing there's going to be things that the council is going to want to discuss further.
So if you have any questions or items when included on the matrix, I think the cutoff date will be Wednesdays, so that he can get the matrix out to you on Fridays. So the first one will come out this Friday.
And to clarify, you can send questions directly to me, and please CC Ms. Arteche and Mr. Sturbank.
Mayor, one more point, if I may, and a gentle reminder to council, it is closed record consideration, so please focus your review on the materials that are in the record and applying the city code standards. Try to avoid the temptation, or please avoid temptation, to do your own research, to look at references or other materials that are outside. There's a lot here already to work with. If you think something's missing, or if you have a question to Mr. Rogers or I about whether another set of standards might apply, or please forward us that question, and then we can help, you know, guide your consideration and make sure that everything stays within the record limit, closed record limitations.
Councilor Benson.
And driving by the site, just for context and to get an idea for layout, is that allowable?
Certainly, you can drive by on the public road. It's a very large site, a lot of it's not visible from Mill Pond Road. If you're talking about looking at Mill Pond Road to help inform your picture of what the drawing looks like, that's certainly fine.
Right, so there being no further business to come for council this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It is moved by Mayor Proton Mayhew, and seconded by Councilor Hallaway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes, and thank you for your time this evening. We're adjourned at 8:59, early, 8:59.